Dale Ames?
President.
Kelly Perrell?
Here.
Harold Jorgensen?
Here.
Robert Schiller?
Yep.
Jason Alders?
Here.
Barry Whitehead?
Yes.
And Liz Stockman?
Yes, here.
Jeff Dunlop?
Here.
Okay, if she's ready, meeting policy now.
Please register your attendance on the signing sheet on the back table. Copies of the agenda are also available on the back table. The agenda as printed or amended will be followed, so all necessary and needed actions by the Planning and Zoning Commission will be addressed. The agenda may be amended by proper motion. Comments from the floor are welcome during public hearings. Those wishing to comment must register on the floor comments sheet on the back table. When comments from the floor are made, individuals must first be recognized by the chairman, second clearly state your name and address for the record, and third allow more than three minutes to state your comments or concerns. Please turn all cell phones off or on silent. Thank you.
Okay, the next thing we're gonna do is we need a motion to approve or amend the ninth meeting agenda of September 22nd, 2020.
I'll approve the agenda.
Commissioner Alders made the motion, and Commissioner Schiller seconded. Do you have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next thing is we're gonna approve the planning and zoning amendments of August 25th, 2020. We have a motion to approve these.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay, Jason Alders made the motion. Someone second it?
Second.
Okay. Kelly Perrell seconded it. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next thing we're gonna do is open the first public hearing, and that's the continuing from the August 25th, 2020 meeting. A subdivision by the Lystico estate at 21413 Nolan Boulevard that subdivides three existing lots into four parcels for purposes distributing land among family members and separating the farmstead from the balance of land. So, I'll make a motion that will continue this meeting. Somebody like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Jorgensen seconded it. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I put the graphic up on the screen for you, just wanna explain what's going on.
Okay, this is...
This is, so this is the Lystico plot on the east side of Nolan Boulevard. They've added an outlot B here. They have outlot A for future development on the northeast corner. They put a lot here for one of the relatives to build upon. So each brother has a lot, and then there are two outlots for future development. Shane, the city engineer, and I are gonna get comments to Gary Lystico, and then he's meeting the surveyor out there, the engineer. The brothers have yet to approve this exactly, but it's, we're close, so we may be coming. They're aiming for the October meeting, so thank you for your patience on that. So there's no action.
Still four parcels?
You were, still four buildable lots, correct? The existing house, these, well, two existing houses, this one and the farmhouse, and then these two new lots here.
Okay.
But there's six.
Six total, but there's an outlot A and an outlot B which are not buildable until you replat them. So that's why these are outlots.
Okay.
Is that basically just told that not have to build a road?
They're under, they're falling under this new ordinance, which is a deferral of the paving requirement, so yes, they will be dedicating the right-of-way up to this back lot, and then they will be using this as a private driveway until outlots A and B are split.
So under the new zoning requirements in suburban, it's a gravel cul-de-sac.
Well, yeah, they can have the driveway whatever surface they want.
Okay. Four lots are allowed now without having to pave.
There's three, three that front onto cul-de-sac. The one fronts onto Nolan Boulevard and would be changed to front onto the side street when the road is built.
So did they add one or no? Because in the past it was...
Yeah, they added, that was the whole contention before, was that to try to get this fair between the family members, so...
So if they added one, then it's, the road has gotta meet...
Well, if this road, if this, if the existing house up here accesses onto Nolan Boulevard, we're okay. If the county requires them to access onto the side street or the private drive...
Is that how our zoning reads?
That's how it reads, yes. Yes, correct. The council tweaked it slightly. Yes.
So does this, just so, 'cause I don't want him to come in on the 27th and then we say, "Hey, just so you know, it's gotta be a different road subbase, you gotta bring it up." So does that layout meet, I guess I wasn't aware that the council tweaked what we had recommended.
No, they're very clear on what the road base has to be and how many lots can access onto the cul-de-sac. So it's hinging on what the county wants and whether they'll allow that driveway.
And we're saying outlot is not a lot, so it's not a buildable lot?
Correct. The both outlots are not buildable, we would not issue building permits for those two lots.
Okay.
And we want, we want this lot one of block two to be a little smaller so that, because the way it is now, lot, or outlot B is, I don't think, large enough to even split, so it has to be large enough to split, or there's no point to it. Otherwise, it has to be a regular lot.
Mm-hmm.
So anyway, there's a few things to work out, but we're getting close.
Any other questions?
When would they have to build the road?
It's hinged on the any future subdivision, so all the lots are deed restricted, and so whomever splits first.
I mean, if they sell lot, outlot B, and somebody wants to build on it, every person has to pay to build the road?
No, the city attorney said that you, you can't, unless the city wants to assess everybody, that they'll have to work it out among themselves as far as payment for the road, but the road has to be built. Right, so who, you know, or if this lot one back here splits first, whoever splits first is the way it reads.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we've already made the motion, second it. We're gonna vote on it now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we're gonna open a public hearing for interim use permit by John Schiller. How you pronounce that?
Chicos.
Chicos Motor Works LLC for property located 8150 Viking Boulevard, pin number 29-33-25-11-0008 for operation of a home extended business selling and consigning special vehicles from the property. The existing pole shed will be, will hold six vehicles with a maximum of six additional vehicles stored behind itself of the shed existing fence. Sales will be predominantly online with appointments required. At this time, we're gonna ask the planner, give us the information on this.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. The property is zone C1 commercial, and with the existing home on this parcel, it's an interim use within the C1 district, so they're treated like basically any other residence. So as long as he's got the residence there, it's almost like a home extended business. So he's using his existing pole shed to store six cars within the building, and then here's the diagram for an additional six cars behind the existing fence and the pole shed. So he meets the 100-foot setback from the adjoining property lines as far as buffers go, and it will be pretty much unnoticeable, I think, from, in terms of, you know, what you're seeing from the road and such. So pretty small operation, mostly online and by appointment only. We have put in a stipulation for him to sell six cars a year, putting those at the end of the driveway, right on the property line here on the pavement. We've got some conditions to protect the city as far as a limit on the number of vehicles per year and hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and no hours on Sunday. There's really no employees at this time, although we put in a stipulation for one full-time or two part-time maximum. We define the types of vehicles, mostly just passenger vehicles, and an occasional truck or trailer may go to and from the site to pick up or deliver a vehicle. So Mr. Scheller has read the conditions and is in agreement with these. If you have any questions, or if he would like to add anything, he's welcome to do so.
Okay, does Mr. Schiller have any comments to make?
No.
Okay. Okay. If not, I'm gonna ask the clerk to verify that the legal publications, the mailings, and postings have been completed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there anybody in the public here that wants to address what this public hearing is about? Big crowd here tonight. Seeing none? We'll come back to the commission here. Is there, do we have any discussion questions, or questions we'd like to ask Mr. Schiller?
Is the Cobra jet there?
Yes, it is.
The question I have, Liz, why is there a limit on how many cars you can have per year?
Well, it's a home business, that's how we're treating it, so we, we wanna, you know, limit what they're doing there. If it's a full-fledged commercial operation, you know, there may or may not be a limit, but you have the right to do that. He states he's not gonna exceed that. Remember, you know, if...
Two a month?
Pardon me?
That's two a month, right? Twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-four in any 12-month period.
Is that enough?
It's, it's not a high-volume business, so yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, if you sell Cobra jets, it's not high-volume.
Now, this, this is in the former Body Shop over here, right?
Transmission Shop.
Transmission Shop.
Yeah, that store, right.
Transmission Shop. Okay. Have any more questions here from the planning and zoning? If not, I'll ask the public again if they have anything they'd like to add here. We have any further discussion, any questions we'd like to ask at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now we'll make a motion on this, what we're gonna do with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Liz, did we ever get any clarification on either six feet or 12 square feet for a sign?
Yeah, I just clarified that, and I think it was actually 12. Is that what I said, Mr. Mayor, do you remember?
No, I was looking in here, it was six.
I know, and I'll, I'll verify that again, I'm sorry. But I, it was one of those funny things where I wrote this, and then I woke up in the middle of the night going, "Is it six or 12?", you know? So I'll check again, but I...
Eight to 10 years ago, I was sure we changed it.
I, I do believe it is 12, so if it's up to 12 square feet, then we'll be sure to include that on condition number 12.
Is there any discussion on this? Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Straightforward. I'll make a motion to approve the IEP with the clarification on six foot versus 12 square foot for the sign.
Okay, Commissioner Alders.
The conditions that are listed under the, under the IEP.
Okay, Commissioner Alders made the motion, if somebody would like to second it. Commissioner Schiller seconded it. Any discuss, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Car show Saturday, bring it out.
Which one?
Bring 'em both, you're close.
That's true.
Second Tuesday of the month, the city council will act upon this.
So council meeting, second Tuesday in October, which is the 13th?
All right.
Well, we can chat before then, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna open another public hearing now. It's to consider amendment to the city code regarding multiple subdivisions of zoning ordinances changes included but non-limited to establishment of a rural residential transition, RRT district with a density and amount of minimum lot size of 2.0 acres limited to settlement area acreage on the east side of the city, and previous surface limitations of 35 percent, lot availability, parking, driveway setbacks, and single-family development standards. So we'll turn it over to our planner at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The intent is to establish the provisions for the new RRT zoning district, rural residential transition with the lot sizes of two acres and an overall average of two acres. So I don't know that there's any other way to do this but to go item by item, change by change, unless you'd like to focus on something in particular that you don't agree with, but in many cases, we're making similar changes to the RRA district as well. So some things cross over between both of our residential districts in addition to establishing the provisions for this new district. So if you want me to guide you through it, I can do that? Yes, okay. So page one, we're establishing the district...
Can you kind of note where we're different from what we're, what our current zoning requirements are?
Sure, yes.
That'd be awesome.
Yep. So page one, we are establishing the name, rural residential transition. We thought that was appropriate since we are in the southeast corner of the city and adjacent to another community that has similar lot sizes of two acres, and also in an area where part of Nolan has smaller lots down there, one-acre lots. So, the first is a clarification in, under the RRA district, we're not changing, we're still a five-acre average with a minimum of two and a half acres. It was just a noting that it was, you know, putting the word acres in there in just clarification. The minimum lot size shall be no less than two and a half acres when it's involved with the plat, otherwise if they're, if we're just doing lot splits in the RRA, we're still at that five-acre size. And then I wanted to bring your attention to a reference to the front setback of 35 feet, and I wanna clarify that this front yard setback has been in our ordinance, but what it applies to is flag lots and other irregularly shaped lots which have front lot lines that are not synonymous with the street right-of-way, so that those homes have to be 35 feet from the lot lines and/or further from the street itself. So usually the flag lot is set back way from the road, so that really the road setback doesn't even apply. So then there's this additional front setback for irregularly shaped lots. So just defining that a little bit more. Number eight on the top of page two is that we are changing for both the RRA and the RRT district that all driveways and parking areas have to be set back 15 feet from any lot line instead of the existing five feet, and we're doing that for, so that there's enough space for not only snow storage, but the ability to plant trees along your lot line and screen your neighbor or whatever the case may be, but predominantly the snow storage and just the separation of driveways if you have two that are very close to the lot line on the, on the shared side. And then, next item is a reference to towers and antennas which are permitted uses within both the RRA and the RRT. I just referenced the tower and antenna section of our city code. And then the engineer in item J on that page has recommended that we establish an impervious surface limitation of 35 percent, and then I've defined what impervious surfaces are, meaning the total of all hard surfaces which do not absorb or retain water, such as structures, driveways, patios, and non-vegetative surfaces, including extremely compacted soils and areas containing class V gravel, are also considered impenetrable. So...
That's 35 percent of each lot.
Total lot area, right. So we're not gonna see that met very often, but once in a while, you know, you're gonna have the person that may wanna sport court and, you know, all sorts of different things, but I would say it's really not gonna be an issue at all, and most people don't even come close to that as far as hard surface areas.
Okay.
But what the engineers use it for is stormwater planning, so it's good to have it in there. So then, beginning on bottom of page two is the definition of the rural residential transition district. Generally, we're just, again, you know, two-acre lot size is still considered a larger lot size and still considered pretty much rural for single-family development. We have put a limitation on the RRT zoning so that the RRT only applies to the mapped area shown in yellow, which was the settlement area, and it is not possible for any adjoining land uses to make application to rezone to the two-acre lot size. The same permitted uses in structures as the RRA zone, the same conditional uses on the following page, I'm on page four now, and there are no interim uses within the RRT district, so there will not be any extended home businesses allowed, so they, people can't use their pole sheds for businesses or contracting type things, but there may be some permitted home occupations like people cutting hair or using their homes for offices that would be, you know, less intrusive, that, that would be allowed potentially. Item G, we're identifying the two-acre lot size with a two-acre average density, the same exact amount of road frontage as our RRA, which is 150 feet, and on a straight section, and then down to 75 feet for cul-de-sacs. On to page five, we are, we have the same lot width and same lot depth as the RRA district, 300 feet, and we're going down to a little lesser setback, 100-foot setback is proposed for the RRT district from the middle of the road as opposed to the 120-foot setback in the RRA district, and we've kept the 150-foot setback from county roads, however, and that matches the RRA also. So number five is the same...
Mr. Chairman? Liz?
Mm-hmm.
So you said all lots are still gonna be, have to be 300 by 300?
Yeah, yep.
So slightly bigger than, do we...
Slightly bigger than what?
That's slightly bigger than two acres then.
Are you sure?
300 by 300 is 90,000 square feet, right?
Okay, well, that might be... Oh, yeah, you're right, it's just a hair, 2.06 acres, so, yeah, I guess you have to...
Tweak that? Gary, good catch.
So I'm sorry, yeah, good catch.
Doesn't matter to me, I guess.
I would think that, yeah, narrowing the lot width slightly would be acceptable if it's acceptable of the commission, if you wanna say, what, 200?
I guess the reason that it really came to my attention too is because of number one, that you gotta have, on a straight street, you gotta have 150 feet of frontage.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, I mean, we...
Well, I saw that you could have a, well, that's where, I mean, if you're gonna do 150 by, you know...
And if you...
450 or whatever it makes to get two acres. You still gotta have 300 feet width though.
Yeah, at your setback line, right.
At your setback line, still gotta 300 feet, okay.
Right, right. Well, what do you wanna say then? Do you wanna say...
No, you can leave it all. To me, it's a minor thing, and I guess I don't wanna make it different than the RRA, so I can just leave it as is.
The RRA is larger lots.
Right.
So it's a little bit easier to have that limitation.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be...
I think we're already giving enough for this RRT, so...
Yes.
What about the 250?
275 even?
You do 275 by 275, you'd still be, I mean, you'd be on Nolan.
I think you should maybe keep the lot depth, so 275 by 300. Well, yeah, so minimum lot depth would be 300, you could have a wider width, obviously, but 275 by 300 is 1.89, so you'd, you'd have to go wider or deeper, but, yeah, I don't have a problem at all with that width.
Yeah. Or 290, so it gets from the two, uh, two acres, it's still 290, the minimum.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah. But you've changed it for both areas or just the one?
That was my question.
Yeah, it'd be the easiest, actually, to change it for both since it's not a very big deviation, but...
Right. You do both, they're gonna have to be two acres no matter what anyhow.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, it's still...
You do 275 and a minimum 275, then, then you're gonna bounce up against the two acres, so...
Well, where I see this being complicated is when you get a corner lot, then that corner lot has to be that size. It can't be a skinnier one to allow a different variation behind it.
Yeah, well, they'll have to figure it out, you know, it's, there's so many crazy lot lines. And if it's, and if it involves a county road, then they'll have a greater... And if it's, and if it involves a county road, then they'll have a greater setback. On a corner.
What's the purpose of the three hundred, I mean, okay, if we were to scratch it, it must be a three hundred foot depth on three? Why do we have to do a minimum width and depth in that number when we've already minimized the front?
Well.
Because if you look at it, I mean, if it's a corner lot and it does touch two streets, you've got one fifty here, but then you've got three hundred here. What's the point of having one fifty if you're going to have three hundred as a contradictory?
But you're trying to keep away, you're trying to eliminate the.
So sometimes if you have angled lot lines, yeah, you'd have less at the street and more at the setback.
Yeah, so that's the building setback, you've got to have three hundred feet.
That's where you measure the frontage is at the building setback.
But we're also trying to avoid homes that are stacked right next to one another, right? If you said it was seventy, if it was a hundred feet minimum or seventy-five foot minimum, you could have lots that are, the houses literally are ten feet apart, but they're eight hundred foot long deep lot.
Right, we don't want, exactly, we don't want real long skinny lots. So I think a hundred and fifty is too narrow. But I know like Credit River has two or two and a half acre lots and they have a two hundred foot width. So I'd say anything, you know, I think two fifty is reasonable. Two seventy-five. Whatever you.
Waiting, two fifty or two seventy-five?
I think two fifty then.
It's still leaving a minus three hundred.
Well, it just, it does kind of contradict. It's kind of, why have it if you're going to contradict it?
Two fifty or two seventy-five, Barry?
Two seventy-five.
Rob, what do you think?
Perfect. And it's on both, right?
Harold?
Correct? Well, the real problem is the hundred and fifty. Because it would've been a lot simpler just to went two oh eight by two oh eight. Instead of trying to come up with another whole set of rules.
Right.
That's all you're doing.
So.
You should keep it simple.
That's why we're trying to make it two seventy-five by two seventy-five easy.
No, it don't come out.
Two seventy-five by three hundred.
When you start dividing up forties, that's what you've got to remember.
Right.
You always got to come up with some odd ball dimension in there. It don't work out.
It's a minimum dimension.
Right.
So let's work with that, it's a minimum.
Right, right, and it's better to have a little more lot depth because that, the rear yard is what you're really using typically for your, you know.
So I'm hearing two seventy-five.
So, well, that's fine, are we scratching a minimum lot width on number three then?
No, the minimum.
The lot width is two seventy-five, depth is still three hundred.
So you're trying to use number three as a minimum lot width and depth?
Right.
Width two seventy-five, depth three hundred, yes.
Understand Harold's point, but the forties are, there's usually enough stuff to work around in them anyway.
So you're leaving the depth at three hundred and the width is two seventy-five?
That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm hearing, and you want it the same for both districts? Or do you want to leave the RRA at three hundred?
Leave the RRA as three hundred, if they have more, they have more to work with, more area to work with. This one is two acres, you divide it up, it doesn't make sense to, you know, to pinch yourself to be at the exact two hundred. Makes it complicated to divide up. May I? Have I got a little extra wiggle room at two fifty, makes it a little bit easier, but that's me.
Okay, so moving on. So same thing at the bottom of page five as the RRA with the impervious surface limitation of thirty-five. And then at the bottom of five, page five, we're talking about driveway surfacing. Detached, single-family residential uses within the RRA zoning district. Shall have driveways and parking areas surfaced with materials suitable to control dust and drainage. So that would mean that people in the RRA could have either paved or gravel driveways. The proposed ordinance here is for the RRT to have required paved driveways in the front and side yards. And that gravel would be allowed in rear yards if they wanted to access a pole shed. Or park, you would have to have a gravel pad or park your RV or trailer bolt on. If it's in the front, you can either park it on a driveway or create an area next to your garage potentially to park it there.
I think a pole barn are we allowing on these?
We had twenty-four hundred, I think, or I don't know if I even included that yet. I don't know that that was in this amendment.
I didn't see it, but we should add that in there so we know what.
Well, but see, we would just go by size.
So.
So anything less than.
Two and a half.
Two and a half acres is twenty-four hundred.
Okay.
Yeah. So that way everybody's being treated the same. Is everybody okay with that? The intention here was to create some uniformity among the neighborhood and since we are a little closer together. To have that paved driveway and the driveways are not going to be as long with that lesser setback. Okay, middle of page six, again, just clarifying that that, this is in the parking section of the ordinance referencing that fifteen foot setback. For driveways or parking areas. Again, and then clarifying in two C that. The adequate provision for management of stormwater drainage and snow removal would be reviewed. When you're looking at driveways and parking areas, that's pretty straightforward. And then basic development standards for single-family dwellings at the bottom of page six. This would apply both to RRA and RRT. Everything has a concrete foundation, pretty straightforward. And then item D there, I'm referencing, well, the reference that we had was this statute reference. That said, all single-family dwellings must be built in conformance to that statute. And then I looked up the statute and it actually refers to modular and manufactured homes. So that doesn't really make sense.
Did we strike treated wood foundations from our R eight two or R five?
Both, yes, yeah, yeah. So just to say that all single-family dwellings must be built in conformance with the state building code, we'll just leave it at that. And then there needs to be some discussion about item F. We're seeing more single-family homes using metal, not only for, you know, alternative types of siding. But, you know, accents and roofs. We did, our material section did address residential roofs and does allow metal roofs. I just want to, this is an older part of our ordinance here, item F, which states that. You know, with these pole, pole barn type houses that some people are requesting and especially in rural areas like ours. It's possible to have a pole construction with traditional siding. Or you can, you know, go with the, allow the vertical metal as you would use on pole barns. And a lot of communities would ask that there be higher quality building materials integrated into that. So that we have part stone, part wood, or part brick added to that. So we just need to have a discussion about whether it matters to you if that metal is horizontal or vertical. And what else you'd like to see as far as aesthetics.
But this ordinance doesn't allow shooms, right? Because we're saying they have to have a permanent concrete anchored structure.
No, you can still build a.
Shoom, a shed in a home.
No, you could still have it be a slab on grade.
Okay.
Yeah, without a basement, you don't have to have a basement, it would, it would have, you know, certainly the required foundation.
But is it going to have, can you do a slab on grade pole barn?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes. But it has somehow, I think, deeper.
It's got some fancy construction requirements that not a lot of people would enjoy.
So I guess for, I mean, we leave that part generally to the building official, I know it's possible. So what I want you to think about is, you know, how you want it to look. And that's why I included some of these photos of the different types of homes and sheds combined. We do have a requirement in our ordinance that the garage or shed area has to be a hundred percent or less of the livable first floor. So you can't have like a giant pole shed with a tiny little house attached, it's got to either be equal. You know, I think that would still apply whether it's a traditional home construction or pole style.
So in F, you're wanting more descriptive is what I'm understanding.
Right, I mean, we could strike it all together, our material section allows steel. And, you know, painted finished steel, no galvanized. If you want to just leave it up to the resident. You could do that, or you could specify, you could leave it in that it has to be horizontal. And, you know, or not. Maybe, maybe we treat it a pole style house similar to a commercial building. Where we have a certain percentage of the facade that has to be brick or some higher quality material. That would be a possibility.
As far as the vertical versus horizontal lines, I don't really think it matters. Because that changing of the lines on the outside of a building is simply cosmetic. And that's what designs a house is curve up to you. So I think striking that from. Eliminating that would just be kind of weird. So yes, talking about doing something of an upgraded additional beyond just all one style is okay.
How do we write something in there Liz, like if we look at the illustrations, you know, your first page, those are all pretty high-end. I'm going to call them shooms, pole barn homes. Page two, the one on the lower left, looks like a garage with a walkway around it.
Well, so I would think.
You know, if you.
You've got to think about the view from the street mostly. And how far, you know, this could have, well.
Is this, is that theoretically with, under the current ordinances, could somebody build that thing on a lot and that's good?
Well, yeah, I mean, we do allow steel, but as it's written, you know, it would have to be horizontal. And yes, I mean, that's partly my concern because I am getting more and more requests for these or, you know, questions, do you allow them? Yeah, so. Maybe what we do too is we could just put this portion of it on hold and look into that a little more.
Because, yeah, the concern I got is like, I don't know that I have a huge problem with somebody integrating a pole barn style into a home. But I guess what I want to avoid is if that's the, if that's what we could end up with, with a certain percentage of our houses. Looking like a, basically a garage with a little living space in the corner of it, I don't know that I'm up for that.
Well, we do have that the garage part has to be equal to the living.
Yeah.
Floor space wise, but you're right, I mean, if there's no other.
Looking at that, it looks like it's fifty percent garage, fifty percent house, but it's a pretty.
Pretty bare bones, right.
Yeah.
Yes, the architectural, whatever integrity on the outside is not.
Looks like auto repair is what it says to me.
What's that?
Looks like auto repair is what it says to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's a garage that's got a walk-in, you know what I mean? But the, I mean, so I'm trying to understand, how do we write into the ordinance? There's something that limits somebody from doing that and, and promotes some of these other structures are, you know, they're nicer to my house.
Right.
Mr. Chair? Yes. I think as the planner said, since this kind of came up for the first time tonight, it really would probably be advisable to table this part and do some more research on it. Because I think to Commissioner Alder's point, you want to be able to restrict it, so you aren't ending up with a bunch of those. Page two items there. But I think it takes a little more than we're prepared to discuss tonight since it's just come up for the first time tonight.
Mr. Chair? Honestly, I think we could just strike item F. Because we have a whole nother building materials section where we could address the residential design. So this is just really not necessary. So we could move this ordinance at least forward and not hold anybody up otherwise, if everybody's good with that.
Ms. Wood, you're saying this ordinance will not cover the.
Materials, right.
Materials. What are we going to do about that then?
Well, we would have a separate ordinance and bring that back next month for further discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Mayor?
I'm fine, I'm just, Commissioner asked it.
No, I just.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't like the look when they do that with the horizontal metal.
Oh, okay.
That's my first vote.
That's your first vote, please? I don't mind it, but I just dislike that one structure, we just got to figure out how we keep these super basic structures as the main living on them.
It just makes me think of that building that's sitting down there Ramsey crossing the church forever.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so that was the end of that ordinance, didn't have.
The question I had there really was on G.
Okay.
Every draft I've seen was twelve hundred on multi-levels and eighteen hundred on single.
Oh, I'm sorry, I floated over the, I'm sorry, you said every draft you saw was what?
Twelve hundred on the multi-level and eighteen hundred on the single level.
Well.
First time I've seen these numbers.
Well, part of the problem is, is we, well, for starters, this is applying both to the RRA and the RRT. So this is not singling out our new district. So the whole intent of a minimum dwelling size is basically to be big enough so that somebody can't always just plop down a, you know, mobile home or a manufactured home. But we don't want to be exclusionary either. So from the couple of builders I spoke with, they thought eighteen hundred was maybe on the large side. So I guess, what is the commission's feeling, again, it's just a minimum. But we're at nine hundred and sixty square feet right now for a minimum and we'd be upping that to a thousand. And then I added, we had just that nine sixty for multi-level and single level homes. And instead we're saying a thousand for the multi-level or split level and twelve hundred for single ramblers, you know. We could up it a little, I, um, but you don't wanna exclude yourself like, even let's say you get a slab on grade senior housing development or something, you know, those might not even be eighteen hundred. So you don't wanna be, exclude yourself or limit yourself either. But it's, it's, you know, we can certainly talk about it.
Why, why are we changing that from nine sixty to a thousand?
Um, well, we're just upping it a little to be consistent with our neighbors for one. And, um, not really sure how they got to nine sixty other than that might be like the size of a-
I know how.
Manufactured home.
Cause that's your average split entry, two-bedroom, single-bath home.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Split entry, okay.
Thousand feet of square floor.
Nine sixty.
Oh, okay.
I, you know this cause I draw all the time.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's good.
So-
Well, what do you think about the whole thing then?
That's, I mean, I have, I have opinions, yes. Um, I don't think nine sixty has to be changed to a thousand because when you talk about a multi-level home, typically it has two levels and there's always a crawl space or a full basement under one of the levels. Sometimes it's a five level, sometimes a three level. And nine sixty starts to multiply when you start to talk about different amounts of levels going into the home. But nine sixty then on top as a two-story is a large space when you start to do a full two-story. Twelve hundred square feet as a two-story then is a really large home versus twelve hundred feet, square feet as just a rambler or a slab. Multiple different ways of looking at this.
But, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You can't even have a three-car garage though. Like, let's say it's even, what, twenty by, or twenty-two by sixty would be a three-car garage.
That's a big garage.
Is it? Oh, yeah, you're right. Twenty is like two skulls.
Twenty-two by thirty.
Yeah.
You're right, so-
That's six sixty.
What's a, what's a three-car?
Twenty-two by thirty.
Oh, that's super narrow though. That's ten feet for each.
No, thirty.
Thirty Y, yeah, twenty-two D.
You pull into the twenty-two.
Ten, but you can't-
That's an eight-foot door and a foot on each side.
An eight-foot door and a ten-foot space?
Yeah, eight-foot door and a foot on each side.
Okay. Well, that's six sixty, I guess.
That's your standard three-car. That is like the bare minimum that code will allow because of the wall bracing that is required for all those things that nobody needs to know about. Sorry.
Okay, well-
More than I can possibly explain right now.
So Kelly's in favor of leaving it. Does anyone else have any thoughts on that or?
What do you think it should be, Kelly?
I, I honestly am fine with the nine sixty for all except single living homes. Because when it starts to come to a home that is single living, slab on grade, or a rambler, that's when they start to get more expensive anyways. Um, ramblers are more expensive to build in general because they don't, they have a full foundation. They require a full foundation. Um, multi-levels only require half of block foundation walls. Um, so you tend to spend quite a bit more money to build those homes. But a slab on grade at a thousand square feet is not enough room in, like you said, even for a senior detached home or something. That's not a lot of square footage. So, because you have to put all of the stuff on that level.
Mechanical and everything, yeah.
Exactly. So it gets to be very tight. So twelve hundred square feet would be the bare minimum.
Okay, for a-
For a single level home.
Okay.
But nine sixty is fine for every other style.
Have we had any problems that you have, that you wanna bring it up to a thousand other than that you wanna be like the neighbors? I don't know.
No, it's not, it's just a minimum. Most people are going bigger anyway.
Yes.
Then why not leave it at nine sixty? We've never had any problems with anything.
We can, if you want to.
And twelve hundred is now changed from today for the single level?
Um, we didn't have, yeah, specification between the types of homes before. It was just nine sixty for everything. So if you wanna say nine sixty for multi-level and split levels and then twelve hundred for single levels?
Are you gonna put a two-story in with a multi-level and a split level?
Yeah, a two-story would be included in that.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's twelve hundred.
So you, we could, you wanna specify all that, write all that out? And then you could say single level or slab on grade? Or is that a good enough explanation the way it is?
Kind of explains it because it says multi-level or-
Multi-level would be a two-story.
Yeah, too small.
Nine sixty?
No, twelve hundred.
No, you can, you can get a three-bedroom, one bath-
Understand that, but-
All that on one level, but it's, it's, it's not huge. It's not huge, but it can be done and it's comfortable.
It's the size of this room, right?
Close. Maybe a little bit bigger.
You know where that come from in the first place?
Where?
In a nine hundred and sixty square foot house, you could use two-by-eights on it. You go to twelve hundred, you gotta use two-by-tens on it. And this comes from the old code before we had engineered floor joints.
Before we had LBLs.
That's where that come from when we go back down into the Warren Johnson era back forty, fifty, sixty years ago. And that's, that's where it came from. But you kept it down seeing the cost of your lumber. Actually, in the last few years, the cost of your lumber versus the cost of your houses went down till recently and now, of course, it's kinda went off the end. But that's where it came from.
I'm just looking at a twelve hundred square foot house on a two-acre lot. Is that what we, is that what we wanna see?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was just gonna ask that same question. How does this relate to the quality of our homes or the type of homes in our various neighborhoods?
Exactly. I mean, this room is roughly thirty by forty. That's what we're talking about for a home size.
And it could be a slab or it could be a-
Could be a slab on grade.
Or a rambler.
Thirty by forty on two acres.
Yep, it could be. No, on, on, well, yeah, I guess on forty, that's a minimum.
Not everybody has to have a big house though either.
Not, yeah.
You know, so twelve hundred square feet is still quite a bit of area, you know, for even a single person or a small family, I suppose.
And if you did the, if you did the shoom, you got a twelve hundred square foot house and you got a twelve hundred square foot garage. So you got a twenty-four hundred square foot building, right? Maybe it's alright. Cause that's just the home and the garage could be up to a hundred percent of the home.
Right.
Alright, I'm okay.
Then they can have twenty-four hundred square feet on a two-acre lot.
And then they can have a separate twenty-four hundred square foot building.
Yep. Right?
Yep, and that's a minimum, so they could have a bigger house. They've got, you know-
Yeah, they could have a bigger house, but that'd be the maximum shed.
The shed is, right, twenty-four hundred.
Okay.
So, okay, so this applies to both districts the way it's written.
But you're gonna leave it at nine sixty and update the verbiage per Kelly?
Nine sixty and twelve hundred?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we're on to ordinance twenty twenty dash oh-three, which is addressing lot buildability. So in item A, in the middle of the page, is just creating a chart for our two zoning districts now, the RRA and the RRT versus just the reference to the previous density. So again, just specifying five acre density RRA, two acre density RRT, with a minimum lot size of two and a half acres in the RRA and two acres in the RRT. Um, and working with the city engineer on this lot buildability section, we clarified a few things. So item B references the one acre contiguous net buildable parcel. So they have to have a one acre area, that's not changed. Um, but they can, at least following physical characteristics, basically has to be upland, um, you know, with soil suitable for primary and a backup system. The basement floor, um, that statement, the basement floor elevation should maintain a one foot separation above modeling. I just moved that up to section one. It was in section, what used to be section three or four, as you see it here, crossed out. Um, it didn't make sense to me in that section. So that is unchanged. Generally, we have, we like to see three foot separation from modeling, but we will go as low as one foot separation. And there's always a potential here to monitor what's going on with that groundwater because, um, the modeled soil and the water table are two different things. The modeling can even be sometimes in the middle of a, you know, a hill because the water got trapped there at some point with all of our clay soils. And some of these pyesometers, um, if necessary, can be, can monitor that water table, which is deeper down and determine where that water table really lies in relation to the modeling. So if your modeling's way up here and your water table's way down, you may not be concerned as much with that modeling. If the modeling is very close to the water table, then you're gonna wanna probably protect yourself and get your lowest level higher or at least three feet above that modeling. So we added item five in here to just allow some deviation if necessary and special modeling if any developers or property owners feel that it's necessary to try to, um, achieve a lesser separation. Any thoughts on that or? Generally, it's not a lot changed, but we still have that one acre upland area and developers can still bring in fill if they need to to create a building path.
Developers pretty well versed with this psoometer verbiage?
Pardon me?
Developers pretty well versed with this psoometer verbiage?
Um, I don't know, I guess, but-
That's what it'll take?
That, I, that's why I defined what it is because I don't know how familiar property owners certainly are, but it would take working, you know, some extra effort with their city engineer as well as a, you know, technical engineer, so.
Okay.
If they have, you know, if they wanna pursue that option, they can. Uh, let's see here. So the next-
Do we need to be that specific or can we just say certification by a licensed geotechnical engineer shall provide the recommendation?
Um-
What if there's better technology or different technology?
Yeah, I guess I don't know, I could-
I mean, if they just, if it's, if a licensed geotechnical engineer signs off on it, we say it's okay, but do we care what technology they use?
Well, I guess the pies, yeah, I guess maybe not. Many, because that's what we're gonna default to is what the licensed geotech says. And if it, if his recom, his or her recommendation is, you know, a separation, right.
He's signing off on it, it's his license, right?
Yeah, most likely. I mean, I think the city engineer would still have to agree with that or, but, um, the thirty to sixty days is allowing, you know, some deviation between-
Yeah.
Dry periods, wet periods, et cetera.
I'm okay either way, it just feels like we're really getting super specific there and it's like-
Well, it is probably more technical than any of us really care to get, but- So I guess, I'll ask the city engineer his opinion or if we could cut that, just make it simpler. See what he thinks. The next section is, uh, starting at the bottom of page two, is our cul-de-sac and dead-end street section, which isn't changing. It's a correction that I'm making that we had discovered recently. So, uh, we have a sixty-six foot right-of-way width. We, we have for many, many years. And, um, so we're clarifying that and that in areas determined to be environmentally sensitive, it's possible to go from a cul-de-sac radius of fifty-one feet to no less than fifty feet for both permanent and temporary cul-de-sacs. And then the street widths edge to edge are twenty-four feet. And we have a, um, for a through street and twenty-two feet for permanent cul-de-sacs, the engineer allows to be slightly narrower. Um, so I don't know if it was here or at council, I was talking about how the actual, um, what did I say? Kinda like the crown of the street, was that last month? I said was thirty-two wide, right?
Yep.
And so it gives you enough room to pull over, but that the paved portion is, yeah, twenty-four. Okay, so that's there. And then I just included in section three on page four, uh, the various dead-end driveway turnaround options. So we recently adopted that requirement for private driveways to make sure that we have fire truck access down long driveways if you're more than two hundred and fifty feet away from the road. Um, because that's the typical length that a hose can, fire hose can reach. So when I'm reviewing building permits, um, we'd be looking at these turnaround options for private driveways. And just, so those are just the graphic options. Any questions, group? Yeah, there's quite a few changes. So I would look into the building materials for residential uses and bring that back in October. So unless you have any significant changes to this, then we'd look to move these two ordinances on to council.
That, that'll be a separate ordinance for the billing part of the day.
Right, that'll come back, yes, next month. So we don't, we won't delay these then.
Will it, will it be added into this ordinance?
No, no, separate.
Okay.
How about the, sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How about the depth and the width to the lot size?
Yeah, updated, alright.
That's what you updated?
Yeah, we did one seventy-five and three hundred.
And you're updating that nine sixty for, on G, right?
Right. Nine sixty and twelve hundred, yep.
We're striking section after a later topic.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm gonna ask the, if anybody in the audience, if anything, yes, give your name and address.
Uh, Kent Reisler, forty-eight zoning, making Willard.
Uh, Kent Reisler, forty-eight zoning, making Willard, Northwest. Uh, my property is located in the Southern area. Uh, I've had several comments on the, uh, draft of the new ordinance. I, uh, this is a moment that the city really has an opportunity to capitalize on what could be done here in the city. The city's been at a loss for basically the past twenty years for development coming into the city. And the primary reason why development hasn't come into the city is because of the way that the ordinance is large structured and the requirements that developers have. Uh, we're at a loss against the other municipalities. Uh, the five acre requirement, uh, we're at a loss compared to the two acre requirement. And, uh, we're also at a loss because of the setback requirement. There's a greater setback. And we're also at a loss because of the frontages and so forth. I, uh, put together a little list and I'll just pass out a little sheet here. This is the new starts in the last three years in the different communities. And, uh, these communities, this is all well and subject, uh, communities. East Belko has just a few of the permits that are going out that are, that are, uh, non-well and subject. But basically, you can see over a three-year period of time, uh, Ham Lake has a hundred and seventy-nine permits that went out. Oak Grove had ninety-seven. East Belko tied at ninety-seven. And Nowland had twenty-three permits that went out in the last three years. Lot availability in 2020. Uh, Ham Lake has eighty-seven lots that are available. Oak Grove has a hundred and twelve lots that are available. East Belko has ninety lots that are available. And Nowland has four. So, there's a reason why Nowland only has four lots available. And, um, the primary reason is because of the way that the ordinances are drafted. It's chasing developers away from our community. It's not because people don't wanna sell their land. Everybody in Nowland, uh, plenty of people that are in Nowland, including myself, would be more than happy to sell their land if they could get the same prices that the people that are in Oak Grove and Ham Lake and East Belko are getting for their property, which is around fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars an acre. But I would like to go through this list in our, uh, that you're, uh, be thinking about changing. And I'd like to make my comments. Uh, page one, or actually on page two, um, you have all driving and parking area setback to fifteen feet. Uh, fifteen feet is fine in most areas. Uh, but when we are on a cul-de-sac lot and so forth, sometimes you do need to get within five feet of the building setback line. Now, I've been a builder for the last thirty-five years and I've also been a land developer, one of the largest land developers in the area, in the Southern County Metro area, uh, for the last thirty-five years. And so, uh, sometimes you do need to get within five feet of that lot line, uh, especially when it nears the street. So, I'd, I'd like to see it stay at five feet, uh, especially not on the parking areas. The parking area is fifty, fifteen, but, uh, on the, on the driveways, it should stay at five. Impervious surface limitations, thirty-five percent. I'm not sure where that's coming from. Uh, has it been a problem here in town? And, and why are we addressing it and trying to come up with a, a rule to, uh, to address it? Maybe we should wait until it actually becomes a problem. Uh, I, as a resident, truly don't want to make an effort, uh, vent it on problems if it's not a problem. So, uh, I like to see impervious surface struck until it becomes a problem. Eleven dash three dash six, RRT Residential Transition District, number eight. If you go mid-sentence in that thing, it says, "This district is intended to create a transition from eight to the northern RRT district to a one acre lot size around Rogers Lake area and to the adjacent one to two and a half acre rural residential lots in adjacent communities." I'm, I'm just wondering what that means.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, don't worry.
Um, the, well, we know what the RRT is, the five acre average, right? The one acre lot sizes are in Rogers Lake in the southeast part of Nowland. As I was explaining, that's where we're getting our name from Transition District, RRT. Um, Oak Grove has lot sizes similar to what, um, we're proposing for the RRT. Um, and there are just scattered lots, you know, at one acre or sometimes a lot of these older splits are, when they took a farmhouse off of a bigger piece, can be one acre sizes. It's just referencing a transition and between our five acre and two and a half acre minimums and smaller lots. That's all it is.
Rogers Lake area, is that the lake in my backyard?
No, that's further south, the one that's kind of on the border with, down on the southeast corner.
Oh.
Yeah.
Page four, uh, minimum lot dimensions and requirements and so forth. All lots should have a minimum of one hundred and fifty foot of frontage. And then if you flip the page, uh, to number three for the, uh, three hundred foot of, uh, frontage. Kelly and Gary both were right. Uh, three hundred by three hundred is a little bit over. If you cost that, that's great. Uh, two seventy-five or whatever it'd be. That limits a flat to be a very boring flat, especially if you're gonna go, uh, to a standard, even if you're gonna go to a two and a half acre minimum on a flat. If, if you give a developer flexibility to allow, uh, so that they can, so that they can have variation and so forth along a street frontage, uh, you, you, you turn out a, a much better product. One problem inside of your ordinance is that three hundred by three hundred foot block, three hundred by three hundred foot is, is over the two acres. And even on a two hundred, uh, two and a half acre minimum lot in your five acre district, uh, it really limits your layout with your front setback being, uh, seven feet. Because you use up so much of the, of the space that then every one of your corner lots ends up to be much larger. And so, if you would reduce that to seventy-five foot of street frontage, especially in the RRT district, and two hundred foot at the building setback line, it would allow for a lot more creativity and allow the developers to really be at pace inside of the development and you would end up with a much finer product. So, I would ask that you consider seventy-five feet for a, uh, minimum and two hundred feet at the front setback. Don't restrict the depth, just restrict the frontage.
So, you're proposing item four on page five say seventy-five feet?
Uh, no. Item, item one on page four, seventy-five feet. And item three on page five, two hundred feet.
For the width, but then have nothing for the depth.
That's right. Have nothing for the depth. With twenty-foot side yard setbacks, that means that the houses are a minimum, absolute positive minimum of forty feet away, which is more than adequate. You can screen between those houses and so forth and the, and the neighborhoods turn out beautiful. Number four, the front yard. The front yard on these houses at a hundred foot from the center line is too deep. And the reason why it's too deep is that, uh, basically, uh, uh, you are requiring a sixty-foot, a sixty-foot setback, a sixty, uh, three-foot setback. And in Oak Grove, they require a forty-foot setback. So, that means that every house I build in Nowland, I gotta set it back an extra twenty-three feet just to meet the minimum at, at one hundred feet. And so, that means that I have to drag an extra electricity, electric gas mean, uh, electric, or, uh, power or driveway. All my costs of that house go up in the city of Nowland. That's extra sun because the front yard is sunny and so forth. And, uh, a lot of people would much rather set their house up near the street so that they have privacy in their rear yards, so that they can set their sheds in their rear yards and so forth. And I would ask you to at least try to, uh, have the front yard setbacks be measured from the property line in the RRT district and restrict that to forty feet. The next item is on page six. And item number two is, they're coming up with, uh, uh, verbiage for parking areas and driveways and so forth, uh, that they want hard surface driveways and they also want hard surface driveways on the sides of the houses. And, um, I don't think that, that we need a, uh, a ordinance or a mandate on that. The majority of people are going to do that, but the ones that aren't are gonna go with a granular, uh, and that is because they're green. Because it does allow infiltration and so forth of some water in the granite and so forth. And, uh, it's becoming more, actually more proper, especially out in the rural area and especially on acreage lots. And, uh, so, I would, I would say to treat the RRT district the same as you do the RRT district. And if it becomes a problem into the future, then address it and change your ordinance. But for right now, I don't believe it will become a problem. If you take a look at my covenants inside of my subdivisions that I do, we are just, uh, working on our fourth phase of a seventy-five lot subdivision in the city of Oak Grove. If you take a look at my, uh, developer installed covenances on my lots, they're on my website at facmart.com, you can see the covenances that we place on our lots. Uh, we actually require a hard surface driveway on forty-foot front yard setback, not seventy-five foot front yard setback, uh, on a forty-foot, uh, front yard setback. So, they'll hold their own. So, I would ask to, uh, to strike that and, and have it be picked up by the developer of the covenances. And lastly, under G, for the single family housing units, uh, the only thing I'm cautioning you for is on a two-story, uh, you're talking about square footage on the main level. And, uh, nine sixty, or nine sixty on a, on a two-story on the main level means that that house is gonna be nineteen hundred square feet, which is a good sized two-story. So, you might wanna cut that back to eight hundred square foot on the main level for a two-story, because that means that that's gonna be a minimum of sixteen hundred square foot on the house itself. And then stick with your nine sixty. That's the only comment that I had on that one. The, uh...
One more comment. See, you said, roll it back to eight hundred, that's a sixteen hundred square foot house versus a...
That's what I'd do. And I'd define that it's a two-story. On a two-story product, allow eight hundred on the main level. That way there, you get a minimum of sixteen hundred square foot. Very few people will build eight hundred on the main level and four hundred upstairs. They're gonna build eight hundred on the main level and eight hundred upstairs.
So, two-story is allow eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
What about a multi, multi-level?
Well, you can stick with your nine sixty definition that you had and the rest of them. And if you take a look at my covenants, uh, in Oak Grove that I have on the deal, it spells it out right in there.
What's your thoughts on the, uh, if it's a single level?
Single level, twelve hundred five. Actually, you'll get fourteen to, actually, almost sixteen hundred square foot. You know, most of the single levels unless they're on a forty or fifty foot wide lot. You know, on a fifty foot wide lot in Elk River, south of Twin Lake School, that's our project. You know, we just bunch two hundred and fifty lots in there. And, and, uh, the houses are, are being built south of, uh, Twin Lake School. But those slab-on grades were built on fifty foot wide lots. They're forty foot wide units. And, and all of those are, are sixteen to two thousand square foot units. And, uh, you know, so... But that's what, that's what that empty nester wants. You know, that, that's what they want. They want two and three bedrooms with a porch on back. So, you won't end up at twelve hundred feet, but it's good to have something in there just to protect you a little bit. But, but most people, you know, you gotta keep in mind, uh, that in today's market, I mean, the sweet spot on a lot, on a two acre lot in Oak Grove, you know, we're getting a hundred thousand dollars is the sweet spot on that lot. And on a package on a house, the lot is twenty-five percent of the package. And that's everywhere in the world today. And so, that means that that package minimum is at four hundred thousand dollars. So, if we push our price point of our lots and some of them sell for a buck thirty, a buck forty, a buck fifty, if you push that price point up to a buck fifty, you now have a six hundred thousand dollar lot, house on that lot. And we average about six, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars or something like that on our seventy houses that we built in Oak Grove. And so, uh, you know, we didn't build them all, uh, builders that built them all. But, uh, and so, you gotta ask yourself the question, you know, are we pricing ourselves out of the market? And I'm not asking you to raise any hands, but how many people sitting at this table right here have an assessed value on their properties today that are living in Nowland of over six hundred thousand dollars? Over four hundred thousand dollars? And who, who can buy these properties? You know, who, who can buy these properties that we develop? And so, that's why you can't take a five acre lot and develop it anymore in these economic times, because it limits your buyers to be the mansion or the upper end buyers building the six to seven hundred thousand other houses. Because it pushes your price point of your lot to a buck fifty to a buck eighty. And that pushes the price point of your house to six to seven hundred thousand dollars. And who have six to seven hundred thousand dollars? Not a lot of my children do. And that's the people that we're trying to keep in the village. And, and a lot of the older people for slab-on grades and so forth, they wanna build a slab-on grade empty nester product, they're going over to Elk River and they're paying three hundred thousand dollars for a sixteen hundred square foot, seventeen hundred square foot slab-on grade tree bedroom empty nester house. That's what they're buying. You know, and right, right now, and for the past twenty years, really, we have not addressed the empty nesters, the old people in our community. We don't have any of those styles for anybody. And the people, believe me, I can see where they're coming from. And they're going to Oak Grove and they're going to Elk River because they wanna be in this community. It's just that they're not available. And if you look at the few permits that are built in this community, they're being built on land that's been long in the family and so forth. And people are rebuilding their houses for their children and so forth, splitting off lots and giving them to their kids. So, that's who's building in this deal. And so, that's why we really need to take a good, hard look and, and open this thing up so that we can get, so that we can get some of these kids in here and, and build it. Onto the, the next draft, uh, ordinance on page one. Uh, this ordinance, uh, number one is the biggest drop act to the city of Nowland from a developer's intent. And that's, number one is the minimum of twenty-three thousand square feet of land with a three-foot separation to soils. That kicks out half of the twenty-five thousand square foot or twenty-five thousand acres that's in the city of Nowland. It kicks out half of that. That means that half, that only half of the land in Nowland would even qualify for that. Even less than half. So, I say change that from twenty-three thousand to ten thousand square feet. That's more than enough space to do both of them. And I'll be glad to have a conversation with Shane on that. And change it to a two-foot separation to water. That's more than enough. And then the balance of the acre to be on at least thirty thousand on a one foot separation. That way there, it gets it back up to that acre that you're looking for. That's much easier to meet. Otherwise, it costs me an extra five to seven thousand dollars per lot to meet your standard to get my one acre buildability, just in grading cost, to come into your village to have the privilege to develop lots here, which you can't do. You can't add, you can't keep it at these prices to these lots. The lots get to be too expensive. My second thing, and I don't mean to ramble here, but my second thing is on number five. And you can, and Jason already addressed it. Leave it up to the geotech guys, because test pinning has a much better, uh, deal in this, uh, piesometers. Piesometers, uh, I don't like piesometers. Pizzometers, I don't like pizzometers myself, I'd rather have test pitting, but I'd rather have my geotech sign off on it and it relieves the city of any exposure to the deal because they got the geotech to fall back on. And so I'd much rather see that, that's a good recommendation. And lastly, I would like to recommend to the city that you consider reducing your right away on your streets and so forth. You currently have sixty-six foot wide rightaways, which is a waste. Sixty foot is more than adequate, several cities, almost all the cities that we deal with have sixty foot rightaways. You go to sixty-six, that means that in the city of Nowland, I have to give away ten percent more of my developable land to the city and there's no reason for it. The only reason is that, and Barry proudly attests to this, is that that's the old way they used to measure by rods and that's four rods or something like that is sixty-six feet. And so that's why the measurement of sixty-six feet comes up. But Hanam Lake, East Bethel, city of Elk River, all of them are down to sixty feet and it works more than good and it allows us more flexibility inside of our projects so that we can give you more park fees, we can give you more houses and we can be more successful in partnering with the city to develop land. So I'd seriously consider that. Before I go, I just want to give you one more handout and this is ten ways of things that you could do that would increase developability and it would draw developers to your community to make you on par or even a little bit above par with other communities. And I for one, since I have land in the RRT area, would be all in favor if you could accommodate some of these things. I'm available for questions, I'm available for workshops, I'd be more than happy to sit down if you want to bounce this ideas off of other developers and ask questions, I'd be glad to have a consortium of different developers, team along with giving recommendations also, but I know what works and I want the developments to be successful, our name goes on. And we can talk to the different cities that we do work in, we can drive through our developments, they turn out very nice. Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Raceler, what are you thinking about for your, for this area in Nowland? Do you have any thoughts, I mean, type of housing?
Well, yeah, so we can't develop our ground and be competitive under your current ordinances, we just can't. We have too much other opportunities in other municipalities, to be honest with you, and that's why I haven't developed. Our ground is for sale, it has been for sale for the past fifteen years. And there's been a lot of ground for sale in the city of, in the city of Nowland. So, you know, I'm in favor of allowing another developer to develop it or I would develop it if some equal or greater than concessions can be made so that we can be competitive. The dirt is not the same here in Nowland as it is in Oak Grove. The dirt in Oak Grove is pure sand. You can get perks to work out, you can get pads to work out and everything else, the clay lenses and so forth, and Barry will attest to this, here in Nowland. I'll tell you what, man, you've got a challenge to get your sites to work out here in town and to go with a three-foot separation on mottled soils and so forth, it's just, it's too tough of a nut to crack and you've got to have some flexibility there and you've got to be able to, to, to work with it.
So none of the recommendations would change the number of lots that you would have on a buildable site, it would just be more flexibility for the builders so that they could make the site work around the land?
Absolutely. In fact, you're exactly right. So on a forty-acre parcel, you're still going to get two-acre lots, you're still going to get, you know, a maximum...
You've got twenty permits.
Excuse me?
You've still got twenty homes that you can build on.
That's exactly right. You're exactly right.
Are there any other questions you'd like to ask Mr. Raceler? No, thank you.
Thanks.
Is that us now?
So that's a ton of information to digest.
Mm-hmm. That's a lot.
Tell you what, a lot of it makes sense. Maybe I'm the only one that thinks that, but there's some things that I think would be worth definitely talking about.
Yeah, it feels like some follow-up is required, right?
The what?
It feels like there's some follow-up required, right? I mean, there's a ton of stuff.
Yep, absolutely, yep. And it really depends on how much you want to let development command. It's really a lot of volume. We've been restrictive for so long with the five acres.
Well, but there, but the problem, the interesting part is it's not, I guess, yeah, I guess the question is you have land that people want to develop and we say it's a two-acre minimum and now it's like, so we're okay with people developing the two acres? So is this, are we putting extra stuff in there, barriers in there to even have people develop at the two acres? Because we're okay with twenty homes on forty acres in this zone. So that's where I'm, and to be, and this is not my, you know, it's not, it's like sixty-six feet versus sixty feet, if it was really measured in rods versus feet, it's like if that's really what drove that, that feels like a odd requirement, right? It's like, do we have to...
Yeah, that's not the uncommon, sixty feet is pretty common for a city street now.
Yeah.
Is very common. It really, like I said, it really depends how much you want to let somebody in. To me, if I was going to change something, I would, just my own opinion, I would still think we're giving too much to one person, we're making all this for him over there. Make it half the city, your whole city, you know, something. Everything's off the twenty-two. That's just my personal opinion. I don't like giving one person so much power and so much advantage over everybody else in the city.
A lot of this came about...
Yeah, he was a squeaky wheel and wanted to leave.
From way before he was even here.
Yeah.
And it was the Metropolitan Council that did this, really.
Right, it really did too. You're right, that's really kind of...
This is where this come from and in order to get any kind of approval from them when we did the comp plan years and years ago.
Yeah, they wanted us to be all at ten acres.
Well, twenty acres is what they started out with.
Yeah.
And we went down and there was even one of those comp plans that never even got approved. And nobody even looked at what we sent back to them was cut down to five acres. They never even looked at that at that time, they totally ignored it. And nobody did anything about it till the next cycle come around and we did it and that time they approved it. But that's really where that come about was that original requirement that we, you know, not have too much, because what they were trying to do was to push everything south, see, into Minneapolis or make sure Minneapolis could buy more guns and shoot some more people. But that's all that it comes to.
It looks to me like this is all about money. He's a developer, he's a big developer and if we do everything he wants, boy, this is going to put a lot of money in his pocket. And is this what we want for the whole community? Do we want to develop our, our community? If we opened up all of our, strict as we have in our, we have before us, if we open this up wide open, you're going to have a lot of people in here wanting to develop. Is this what we want? Because he's not the only one that'd be willing to develop. He owns a lot of land here in Nowland, both sides of the city.
Right.
And the thing is, if we open as much, when I sat here listening to him, I was thinking, well, money, 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 he's looking all at the money side of it. He's not looking at the best interest of Nowland. And so I don't know, we've already started discussing this, talking about this, do we want to spend some more time fishing over this, spending time going through this? Did you get any information, Liz, that would help us with hearing him?
Mr. Chair? There are a couple of things that he brought to attention that I don't even understand and I do understand a lot of these codes because I deal with it all the time. One of them that draws my attention that I know absolutely nothing about and have no idea why he's asking for a change and want more information on is in the ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three, under B number one, on that page one. I don't know what that is, I don't understand all of that, I lean on my experts for that. So he wants to change that, I don't know what that means. I do know that our city does have some really crazy soils and that that does put a damper on how we can build here. So that's something as, as I want to know more about because I don't understand that at all and unless someone can explain that to me.
One thing that I, why I kind of disagree with that thing is, well, first of all, you need to have, he's got to have, I mean, this land area is three feet above mottled soil or the water table. I mean, your, the bottom of your septic has to have three feet clear to the bottom of the mottled soil.
That's right.
So at that point, you've got to have at least six feet separation, basically to have a three-foot septic system and a three-foot mottled soil.
So isn't that why most people end up with mound system? Isn't that what we're, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, you're going to have a lot more mound systems than Nowland, yeah.
Okay.
Which...
But well, how does that have to do with the size of the square footage of the, the area and the balance? What does that have to do with that? I don't understand any of this.
I, I'm not that...
Okay.
Well, it's, it's, well, just because of how much wet land is where he's trying to make things work better for him.
I understand.
Same thing, it's, it's, comes down to the dollar of it.
He's got some lower land.
Or how many, how many lots can he, can you fit in there to have buildable space?
One of the big things we have to deal with is the hardpan and it depends on what level that hardpan is out there. And there's certain areas where it's quite deep, there's certain other areas it is not.
What do you consider the hardpan?
Well, it's a soil and it reminds you of when, if you ever watched him drill a well and it's got like a gray cement stuff. And when that gets real dry, it's so terribly hard that you can't pound a bar through it, you can't do anything with it. And when we get a lot of dry weather and next spring we might have a lot of snow out here and I'll have no place to go, so it'll sit in ponds all over the place. And you go out there and get stuck all over eventually, but it takes quite a while for it to dry out. And we go down the road and we'll see everybody's planting their corn, you can't turn a wheel. That's when you're in hardpan. And if you look on a real soil map where it shows green in Nowland, that's the end of the hardpan and it don't go very far into Ramsey. And it's definitely down there. I've dug through it different times and you'll find out when you go get through it and when you can't get through it, but it's a real mess. And we have another area over here, what used to be part of Lawrence Creek your own and you know, there was, remember that guy from Jemblin, you must remember him Dale? And he was going to put houses over that whole parcel over there, but he did not have enough ground above the mottled stuff and some of that's really low over there. And we said that he had to have a gopher pile for each house, if you know what I mean, and that's what it amounted to.
Right.
But when he got done figuring that out, how much each gopher pile was going to cost him, the whole thing went away and it's being farmed to this day and there's no houses in most of that yet because of that. And that's because of, of the type of soil that's there and, you know, it's just too low.
So can we...
He's trying to make it, because look, as cost effective as it is to do it in a sand in Oak Grove, but it's not going to get that way.
But can we, can we add this to a discussion for next meeting on the, he's got like ten items that we probably need some additional data from Liz on, on what does this actually mean to our community and what does this look like? Because, you know, some of them I, I'm just going to pick on the sixty feet versus sixty-six feet, is that a big deal? Maybe, maybe not. Is the twenty-three thousand to ten thousand on, on land area? I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Kelly on that, it's like, what does that actually mean? So I guess what I would propose is for the ten items that he's discussed and he did a nice job of summarizing them, can we have Liz dig into that this next month and then come back and say, this is what this actually would mean for our community and on a normal plot of forty acres? Because, you know, the bottom line is he's not asking for more buildable lots on forty acres, he's trying to figure out how he can maximize getting twenty lots out of forty acres, right? Because in some cases we, it's probably eligibility issue, so he can't get twenty lots out of that or he's got a, he's got more, more costs tied up in developing each lot, which I know it's not on top of the money, but I also understand it's like, is there, is there some things we could do to make it easier? I, I don't know. What do you think of that, Barry?
I think it really just depends how much you want development to command. It's always you make it is how fast it's going to start coming in. If you want two hundred lots in his corner over there...
No.
Till we start it next year, then give him what he asked for.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I could certainly lay out pros and cons of different things, you know, if you think about things like this buildability requirement, you're looking at a half acre of a two and a half acre lot, so one-fifth of the lot, is that too much to ask that that is a usable area, you know? Because we do not exclude wetlands or...
Right.
Other low areas from our lots.
I think that one is really...
So those would be great things to bring back, Liz, because that, in perspective, it's like, are we, what are we really asking for?
Mm-hmm.
And so I can put some context to it, because, you know, he, he's well spoken, he brought up some good points, some, some points are probably valid, some points we maybe could, could look at.
Another one is the setbacks, you know, like with the street den, you know, possibly we could reduce that.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't cost anybody anything apart, you know, with a great big front yard. In other words, it's not really doing us a lot of good.
Maybe that's a, I mean, maybe that makes sense.
It's something to look at anyway.
Except if you want to put your septic system in your front yard.
Well, what would that hurt if, if, you should have enough space left there, shouldn't you?
Not for forty feet, you've got to have ten foots up there.
But is that, is that part of the flexibility though? I mean...
Well, right, then that's, it's a minimum, right.
In some, in some cases, it may make sense to put it in the front yard, in some cases it may make sense to put it in the backyard. Do we want to drive everything to, so I, that's, that's what I propose, because I think you do a nice job of doing the...
He possibly would have of an existing development, how he's laid it out, that we could look at and just see what, how he moves things around and, you know, and to give us an idea of what, what he's, he was into.
Yeah.
Because if you get an actual concept of what, what comes out of that forty, you're going to have a better idea of where you're flying.
Yeah.
Some of this stuff probably makes sense, maybe some of it don't, I, I don't know. So I think we need to do, take a look at some of this.
I think there's some give and take and maybe, yeah, you could give a little and take a little.
I, I think that's, that seems reasonable to me.
How many of you have toured any of his developments over in Oak Grove?
I've not looked at any of them.
You know, part of that was the old Meslin farm and it lets up to the park down there actually. And he's got some beautiful homes and some of them lots in there.
Is that behind a fire station?
No, it's south of the fire station, you've got to jump over some on there because...
West of SRO.
Oh, yeah.
South of twenty-two.
Yep, south and right, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
But you can drive around in there, it's quite a few roads drive out though, but it's interesting anyhow.
Okay.
Lot of mature trees down in that area.
So what's the recommendation for next month with this, with these two ordinances? Do we, is the...
And Mr. Chair, can I ask a question just as a commission and just so, Mr. Raceler started out with the new home starts, a lot of availability, obviously that was his concern with changes he was making. How does the commission feel about that? Do we want to compete with Han Lake? Do we want to compete with Ham Lake? And Oak Grove needs capital to keep up with those numbers?
Mr. Chair? My, my opinion is, and it's my opinion, obviously, Now Then has always been a little higher priced because of our acreage. And, yeah, we don't market to the first-time home buyers and the minimum square foot each house is because of the size of our lots. This RRT is going to open that door, where there's going to be people that can afford a smaller lot and a smaller home, unlike what we've had before here. It's a completely different ball of wax.
But we've got to remember, the reason why we have, we've owned this RRT is because of him. Because of his suit against the city. And what, what it looks like to me, he might have some good ideas here. But the thing is, it completely upsets what we've, we've got before us here. And I have nothing wrong with, we're looking at some more. But we're, we're not going to change too much because we're not going to make him completely happy with whatever we do.
I, I totally agree. And I, I don't know, I'm not looking to turn Now Then into, if it's a Ham Lake that's done two hundred homes in the last couple of years. I'm looking at it as, if there's some stuff that we haven't placed that doesn't make a ton of sense and we don't have a, a huge rationale why it's sixty-six feet versus sixty feet, and that makes it more flexible for somebody to develop their land. He's one individual, but there's potentially other individuals that may want to develop their land as well. And if it's a setback thing that Harold talked about, if we did it originally because we thought all the septic systems should be in the front, while there's been mound systems and a ton of technology in the last twenty years, now we can put them basically anywhere. Does it make sense? And, you know, can you have a granite road back to your building versus does it have to be asphalt or gravel? You know, those are, they're valid questions.
Yeah, I'm with you on this, but there's some research needed to be done to understand why. Look at this a little bit more carefully.
I, I agree. He had, he brought some point, good points up.
About Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
It all goes back to what you want. I mean, do you want to stay status quo, more rural? You know, we've, we've never, the intent has never been to attract a lot of development. So, people in the past have not been that concerned about, you know, maximizing number of lots. Until, of course, you're a senior and it's time to sell your farm, said, well, then you're hoping for maximum value. But, yes, the five-acre lot average does limit number of lots. So, you have to be still on board with that if you don't want to change anything. If you are willing to change, then you're going to see development come in at a faster pace. And it's, yeah, it's not comparing apples to apples to compare us, you know, necessarily to Oak Grove.
But change is inevitable. That's what we're up for. It's just a matter of what level change are we going to do.
I think Barry brings a good point. It's like, how fast do you want to bring it in? But at the same, so I'm not saying, he brought in ten points, we're just going to, okay, we're going to automatically go with what Ken said. But I think we can research it and say, what does it make? You know, what are the pros and cons of sixty-six feet versus sixty feet?
Okay.
If there's none there, what makes the most sense for setback? Does it, does it really matter? And then on the one acre or on the twenty-three thousand square foot, if we're asking for it, that's a fifth of an acre that has to be buildable? Does that pass the reasonability test? Maybe it does to us, and then we can say, hey, we're not changing that, so we can go from there. His, I mean, he's potentially correct. Now Then does have a lot of wetlands and lowlands. And, yeah, you're right, it's not all developable land, and that's, that's why people like it out here, too, right?
Right.
Okay. I get the sense that we'd like to table this in until our next meeting.
So, we continue discussion?
So, we can continue the discussion to clarify some of the points that he brought out, which I think he did bring on some good points. And...
At the same point, this is only strictly for his benefit. This is his area. This is plain, plain his. It's, it's one point you want to give him to make.
He's got a lot of lowland over there. That's why he's in the reverse and seller.
There are a couple of points he brought up that apply to anybody, me.
That RRT. Well, you're not in the RRT though, so...
No, I'm not. I'm in the RRT, but I'm just saying, there's a couple of points that even apply to somebody like me. So, it's, he has some valid points, and like I said, I need to know some more information.
It'd be interesting to, you know, he's a builder. We had a builder in last month that has a thirteen, is it thirteen or fifteen site home that he's putting on, that he's developing? It'd be good to, it'd be interesting to get his perspective on what he thinks of this as well. Because he seems to be able to make the herd ordinances work, right?
Well, he bought forty acres behind him. That was mostly wetland just to get that average density.
Twenty, yeah, yeah.
Whatever he bought behind him, yeah.
Twenty, right.
That was almost all of wetland, just so he could take more lots, yeah.
And it looks like the less, because they're making it work, too.
Well, it's, yeah, that's not a comparable density, but, yeah, yeah.
But, but I can see that it, it's something, maybe there are a few points we could add, add to this. You know, if somebody like to make a motion, and we...
I'll make a motion to continue the discussion on the two ordinances for next month with Liz doing some further analysis on points one through ten for the RRT districts.
Okay. Commissioner Aldrich made a motion. Would somebody like to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Georgerson seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
And so, you're continuing the public hearing? Because this is a public hearing.
Yes. Yes, that's what it'd be. So, she could give us some more information. Any other questions? Before, on all papers, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Okay, motion, great. Okay, the next thing we've got on the agenda is a site and billing plan review of the Burns Auto five, three, four, zero, one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. The site is for sale and potential buyer would like to utilize the site for the use of auto sales and new IUP required as existing. IUP is not transferable.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Rick Sansabees here, and Mary Swanson, and you, you're slapping her, please. Thank you for coming. So, we have proposed reuse of the Burns Auto site for continued sale of used vehicles. So, Mr. Sansabees' intention is to create office space within the existing buildings, starting with the two buildings up front. And then after the first year, potentially creating additional offices back in the house. So, I created this site plan, just kind of highlighting what his intentions are and some of the possible discussion items. So, he's talking about ten offices in this northerly building. Four offices with two, two stall garages, I believe, in this southerly building. This northerly building has a septic system, as does the house, of course. He would need to get water and sewer to the southerly building, which is why I included this grading plan, which shows where the pond is, the stormwater pond. And so, researching or determining a place where a septic system down here would be one thing he'd have to look at. But going back to this site plan, he'd like to rearrange the parking a little bit. He's willing to stay within the hundred and thirty-six stalls that were granted to the Burns Auto operation. The way, you know, he works is he has individuals that lease basically five or six stalls. They are required to have five stalls as part of the state sales, used car sales license. So, they can have this as their address. They would sometimes be here selling vehicles on site, and they may also operate, you know, off-site out of their homes or online or whatever they do. So, the intent is to have, you know, one big sign and call it the, you know, Rick's Auto Lot or whatever he wants to call it. But then each door of the office has to have an exterior entrance and its own sign with the business name of the individual that occupies that. Generally, some of the past concerns that the neighborhood raised with this type of operation, you know, we have a, going back to this aerial photo here, the, there's what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven homes, eight including the home on the Burns Auto site. But seven homes on this cul-de-sac. Some of their concerns were the test driving on the cul-de-sac, which he's willing to control that or prohibit that as part of the IUP. One other thing I've heard from residents is at the intersection here of one ninety-ninth and St. Francis Boulevard, you know, being it's gravel and people kind of peel out and it's hard to determine if it were, if it was, you know, the owners of this, or, excuse me, the sellers or managers of this previous sales operation or whether it's people test-driving cars, kind of peeling out on this gravel and leaving ruts there. But, anyway, so there's some things to address. But just generally, he's wondering if you are amenable to this. I did have somewhat of a concern in converting the house to offices because you're bringing that commercial use kind of closer to the existing homes. And there is a hundred-foot buffer requirement. And if you measure from the edge of this house to the western lot line, you're at about eighty-eight feet. So, that would have to either be a variance from that buffer requirement. You know, maybe additional screening or something along there if you were to go that route. We have multiple principal buildings on the same lot. So, this, you know, as it is now, it would be, have to be owned by a single owner. And he's willing, you know, to be sort of the executor, that owner, the manager of all these different salespeople. So, yeah, we, so anything you, any comments or things that come to your mind? Anything you've seen from past operations that you did or didn't like? Now's your chance to bring those up and just give Mr. Sansabees your thoughts before he puts money into revising plans and, you know, moving forward with building renovations. He would have to meet the building material requirements of the commercial district. So, he would be upgrading the materials on the two buildings and also the house if he goes that far. So, any thoughts on this idea?
That's going to be an awful lot of offices. You're going to have to convert a house into offices also.
A lot of, an awful lot of what, Mr. Chair?
Offices.
Oh, offices, yes.
So, you have three different places?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's the proposal. So, eight in the house, ten in this other building, and four in the southerly building. Well, not everybody is there at the same time. So, people just come and go at their will. Mr. Sansabees, maybe you can give a little description like you gave me of, you know, how you've seen it work up at your St. Francis location and, and the fact that even though you have five stalls per person, they're not always, you know, full of cars.
No, like, a lot of these people, like, they're just on the after, just kind of, we're going to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen and I can share, yeah.
The same as all, they require is five spots. So, they're licensed in one for their office for themselves. All they need to do is be there four hours a week. And they can pick their time, you know, Monday through Friday. No junk, be all nice-looking cars, won't be something maybe broken hardware and pieces. A lot of these people, what they do is they'll have a shop somewhere. And it doesn't need to conforming application. They have a license there. So, they come, see what you need. Got to have a storefront, you've got to have a desk, two chairs, and a filing cabinet. And an accessible bathroom, which could be shared. That's all you need for a safety license. And a lot of these people come in and they say that they're there four hours a week, and half the time, they're not even there. But, you know, the states, they come out and inspect them, make sure everything's good. But that's what a lot of them do, they get separate shops, they fix their cars down there. They have a license, makes it much easier to do all the paperwork, you know, for getting titles, and you don't have to pay for the transfers. You get into all the different auctions, and you save a lot of money for this guy that buys and sells cars. A lot of these guys are foreign people. They're buying, throwing them in a container, and shooting them across the water. But they have to have a license to do that. And then what we do is, they run into a little spot, meets the state requirements. They say, if my place here, you know, there's thirty-five spots could be used for parking, I think I got nine cars. Couple of these guys, I've seen them, I see them once a month when they come and pay the rent. That's all they come in. But they use their license, and as long as they meet the state requirements, they're all good to go. And basically, you know, the lot would probably only be a quarter full of cars. And then in each, you know, they've got to have five assigned spots, which will be a little, twelve-by-twelve little sign a little close in front of each parking spot of theirs, because that's what the state wants also. And so, the state guy comes in, they bobs, oh, Bob's Auto's over in Sweet G. He's got his five spots sitting right there. The leader wants to see this, inspector wants to see those and see his office. If it all matches up, he's good to go. So, everybody have their own assigned spots. And if they, somebody else puts their car in there, the sign says that car, they be told, that guy's car. And they'll say, if Sweet A puts his cars in Sweet D's, they'll be totally... And like, say, won't be junk, it's going to be all, it's part of the lease. It's all good cars and not in pieces and, and no flat tires, much, you know, that's what I have a flat tire. They're not going to look like they're sitting there for hours here. Kind of like, say, a new dress wall, that's kind of what the fronts are going to look like. There'll be the highway side and that one south view of the, the shop. And then, she's got some extra parking on the driveway up to the house. But if we've got enough spots, we won't need those up there. We'd, we'd think we're going to pull that container out of there. We'd have more of the spots here, though.
Where is the container?
Containers are right in here.
Okay. Where the trash is and...
Okay.
Last one, I'm a pro, with you guys.
So, he would, you know, have to stick within the, the same runoff requirements or area of this parking lot, you know, unless, if he's adding parking up here by the house, maybe he needs to remove some to, you know, so that the runoff doesn't change. Otherwise, he's going to have to alter the ponding area. So, some of these calculations, you know, may or may not need to be submitted to the engineer for review.
But like, you're on the west side of that main shop right there. I mean, there's only two spots there, and I mean, we could put another two or three spots right in there, and it's still on the same block.
Yeah, it's...
Which ones are you talking about?
Right here, behind the shop.
That one right there, yeah. Because right now, there's two big garage doors, and they were using it for service work, so they would be eliminated there.
On the, on the south end building there, you've got four offices and two end garages?
Which one, though?
This building.
The south building? So, there's parking right now in front of that? Would you have to eliminate that parking to be able to access those garages?
Correct. Correct. So then there's like four spots, or it'd be six spots in that. What should you jog up towards the other end up there?
So he would probably go, you know, back to Bogart and have them amend this drawing to suit him and then...
You're saying you don't need the parking spots by the house?
No, not up there, no.
Up here, you don't like it? Oh, okay.
Whatever it was older, with a hundred and thirty-six, there's plenty of room there anyways.
Right, right.
But I believe we would need that, I might be too, say like a blacktop from out of forty-seven. I mean, there's not gonna be that much traffic in there anyways. It would be part of the lease that they do have to run their tests on forty-seven. I mean, I would never test their car and graph or anything, that's why we're highway.
Right. Well, yeah, we'd have to discuss that with city council. But, yeah, maybe with just less cars overall, it would be, you know, improved because, I mean, they had more than their allotted number of cars previously at, at times, which, you know, may have been problematic, so.
We have a nice white fence across the front, nice tree, build a white metal fence across the front of the grass up. Make it look nice.
That was gonna be my next question, if all of these agents drawn on here, fence, trees, pavement, and then they added septic, is that something that you're all willing to take, undertake for this?
My thought on that, farthest building, being sure it's clay, if it's clay there, it's gonna be an amount system somewhere. They can regular containers are behind them or them receiving, it would never be a.
Oh, up in here?
Yeah, it'd be a good spot, and then if there was a problem with the other two buildings, you can figure it out, then you can tie all three of the buildings into one. I mean, there's not, I mean, there's, you know, there not gonna be that much use. There's only gonna be three bathrooms, one in the house, one in the sheds. So it'd be three total bathrooms, so it wouldn't have to have the system. Stocking the superbodies would be much cheaper to go one person than three. And then you said right after that, in place, oh, you're ready to mount systems later.
Well, yeah, it's a reasonable location. Do you have to take out some trees in there, or not?
Uh, really, no.
No, not.
Probably if you're on the edge of that blacktop or that hundred and fifty-six, it's gonna be fifty-six and feet back to the tree.
Okay. Well, so there's a landscaping requirement, you know, we would just look and see what's there, what we need to add, if any. You know, it would be nice to get some greenery up front here if you didn't need all the parking spots. We don't, of course.
We need all the parking spots, and then we have to redo our water flow, we can test them all.
Yeah.
But I mean, on that north end of that middle building, that's a pretty good size. Yeah, I mean, that's what the septic is, but I mean, there's some good trees in there. We could put some on the side, you know, or, you know, base them on a single road or something. But past experience, you know, salt fills a lot of stuff, that's why, anyway.
Right, right. Our deputy clerk, she lives on that road actually, and what have you noticed, Ellen, since there, you know, since the sales hasn't been there for a while in full force? I mean, have you noticed differences, or?
Just noticed a dump more.
Well, but, yeah, they're gonna.
About what's left there, but it seems like there's, it's just an invitation for people to come and do cookies in the parking lot right now, it's just sitting there open. But, I don't know, that corner coming up on the forty-seven there, that's like perpetual pothole. These people are forever spinning out there, and you know it's not the residents that drive it all the time, so.
It's the male person.
It's the male person.
No, they don't drive very fast.
You'd be surprised, I love it.
Another question too, wasn't that kind of be part of like the state, I think at forty-seven?
It was, it was supposed to be part of the, they'd never got the apron on there.
Yeah.
When they redid the highway.
Actually, that's a state, the apron.
Forty-seven. That was the year that the state, when they redid the road, the government checked down and everything is papers on that.
Ah, I see.
Isn't that lovely?
So I don't need to get, I can have it before. Look, I don't like that.
I got a question to ask Liz. I know when Swanson was in there before, we talked about having to tower that all the way up to the, up to the forty-seven.
That's what we were just talking about, whether, you know, we can require that or not, or if it's needed.
That's what we thought, it was on the last one, is that we were, that was supposed to be paved, but.
Well, the city engineer wanted it paved because he thought it was silly to have a paved parking lot go onto a gravel road, you know, but it's really the city council's decision, so.
The only other complaint that I've heard from the neighborhood there is pushing snow across the road there into neighbors' yards and driveways and stuff like.
Oh, yeah, like if they push here?
Yeah.
And that's against the law anyway, so we can educate them, but. Yeah, snow storage, they have plenty of room for snow storage here, and back by the pond.
Yeah, basically, if you just a sidewalk coming from the house.
Yeah, that would be good if we could even just eliminate this access here and come from this way if we needed to have any sort of a, yeah, parking or drive. And just eliminate that access completely and have, you know, this be your through.
I thought we talked about that they paved it on the last time Roberto.
Well, I can pull the minutes and see what, you know, how that ended up, but.
Was it supposed to be required and they just never did it, or what?
No, I don't think so, I think it got, well, eliminated at, at some point. So, any other concerns, or if we're basically staying within this footprint? You know, now he wants to use the house for his son to live in for a year, and then it would be converted to commercial, and then it would never go back to a residence? You'd make that part of the IUP and put a limitation on that, or, you know, a timeline on the, on the house because?
Are you sure that's what you want?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, anytime we feel, you know, we'll do the one building, fill it, then get the next one, and then do the next one.
Okay.
I'm gonna take one a year, but I mean, he's, there is something, the cash will come in a little bit there.
Any chance you're gonna get somebody that will come in and take fifty stalls from here, or not, or what?
What's that?
Any chance you will get somebody that comes in and takes fifty stalls? So you got more to fill plot, or not, or? Most of it is the, like, the.
Things are small fiber, you know, let's see, I'm young, guys, a little smaller. Fifty cars, any guy, it's gonna be more people.
Yeah, more staff and everything else, yeah.
Yeah. See, it'll work great, I mean, we just give them, they're fine with the spots and, you know, then they'll put a couple at their house or whatever, you know, and what they do, they place with their files and their set titles and things, that's gonna be on the process.
Got a question to ask, what about when you get these cars in, you have to clean them up? Do you have to have a special place to let that water drain out too, or?
Up and likewise, they clean their car before they bring it there.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
What about, you doing oil changes and stuff like?
No, no repairs at all.
Cause I think Swanson used to do some work there in the building, he had that garage.
That's what I thought, I thought, now that need doing there, there's too many garages to repair. They have to spot them and fix them, whatever.
And I don't think they were supposed to, but they were, yeah.
No, we're, yeah. They have two shops on the end, if they do any repairs, they're gonna do it inside. And then I guess maybe adding a fender on it or something, or something small. Just so there ain't nothing outside of after or pile of junk's in there.
So Liz, as you were explaining there, so how does one owner deal with all these different office leases? How do you maintain control over that? The appearance, and right now, obviously, with cleanup, it's kind of a mess.
Basically, they don't pay their rent, they're open door. You know, they, they don't pay their rent, the federal state, they need a license. They're not conforming, because if they have to be conforming with their, they have a license, which you go to the state, the state wants lease, you want the zoning paper, say that the property's owned properly, you own the property, and they gotta pay old permit, they gotta bill, and they gotta belong, you're insured. They're gonna split away after state before they get a license. Then the state comes out, inspects the site, sees their signage is right, their office is right. They all have a sign on their door saying, neighborhood place, what hours you're there. And by the way, I don't think eight, eight and one, or eight to four, or something, they'll say, aren't by a point. Cause I got one guy, he's driven a lot of cars, but, you know, they, he's called, they call him, and he comes up, shows him. He's carrying their paperwork in their office and he sends them out. Did I answer your question about?
You require every person to be licensed? You require every person to be licensed?
Yeah, rather than, yeah, otherwise, most of the.
So there'd be twenty-two zoning verification forms, you know, a form for everybody that offices there. But I think, you know, what the mayor was getting at, who's, who plows snow and picks up the garbage and cleans the bathrooms, and who's gonna make sure this, you know, looks?
If one guy does put his car out there with the fenders off with the flat tires, who's, who has the monitoring?
Oh, I haven't, I never break up the road there, I go by it probably every other day. From the shop, I'm looking back. If there's a problem, hold in there, you know.
Obviously, if it's an IUP, and you don't stay on top of it, then you lose it, and they all, they all lose it.
Correct, yeah. They're pretty good at it, you know, I mean, you have a little fear a little bit, there's a home that's still this way it is, or you have the door, and, you know, they never had to take one of the others.
Are the, are the guys from St. Francis gonna move here, you think, or not?
I guess even the, even the same as, when you go for the license.
Well, silent location.
You release, they gotta be there just a year.
Yeah.
Are, are you gonna sell cars there also?
No.
Or you're just gonna have these people come in?
If they went to office, it's gonna be for them.
Contact with you? In other words, you won't have, you won't have a need for all those parking spots then?
But he's, they're, hundred and thirty, that's even, twenty-two offices, there're gonna be a hundred and twenty-five spots.
What, you said how many offices?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two times five.
That's what I meant, I'm gonna give you.
Okay, I didn't, it can't be that many, okay.
Yeah, so there's plenty of spots there.
Do you have an office there too?
No.
You have to have one for the person and plus five sales spots?
Yeah, the, the one person, you just deserting one area, like ten spots, I mean, no, I don't want to read it same time. And that seems to satisfy the state.
Okay.
On your snow, snow removal, then you gotta move the cars around to remove the snow, or how does that work?
What I do up there is if I go down the middle, if their cars are all the way up all there, otherwise, it's up to them with their cars. And plow right where their cars are at. You know, you can't get them to be up there sometimes. Like I say, we're gonna go right down the middle, up to the back, to the bumpers, one way or the other. And then it's up to them, if they go out there, it's in right in there. Snow is removed within twenty-four hours of the, after come, you know, so. If they wanna do something, maybe you should move them, otherwise they're a lot of, but probably all them people that, you know, probably only gonna be, see if there's a, you could use the hundred and ten cars just for the dealers. There'll probably only be probably thirty, forty cars in there, at most. Yeah, but most of these guys, you know, gone by summer, which is known, they got their shops on there. They just have to have that license so that they can.
Sell them.
Sell them, yes. And they have, they have their storefront.
I believe it's nice to see what you're planning for the building exteriors. One of the problems I see on Liz's list here is the lighting, we've had a problem with. Regulations of lights have to stay on the prop, within the property boundaries. And the lighting on that is extremely visible all the way down to twenty-two, so.
I don't know why it's on all the time, like I say, I don't want to see it, I mean, they could be on a timer, let's shut them off at nine-ten. I'm sure it's pretty expensive around the town.
Well, if they pointed more down maybe, you know, or something, we could figure that out.
Something like that, we figured that out, yeah.
But you made a comment too, you thought maybe they were taking the lights for some reason, but hopefully they don't.
Hopefully, yeah. If they do disappear, there should be lights, you gotta have lights.
You gotta have, yeah, something.
You don't have to have a.
Probably don't have to be as tall as they are right now, for a while.
No, you put them on a timer, shut them off, let them run four or five hours a day.
And bring them down to, cars aren't right there.
Yeah, I know, they're pretty high, yeah. If they disappear, well, to that, I'm not gonna tell them that anyways. It's quite a problem there.
No light, cars will disappear soon.
Well, they should have a trench.
Will the public be able to come in and buy cars there then? They, they will? And you'll have to deal with individuals, whoever.
Yeah, cause that's why, that's why you put the signs under five spots, so they can see who they are. That one big sign out there where you can tell where all those little offices are. Will they, will they, will they see where these guys are, where these guys are, where these guys are. And then, you know, a layer or something to them. You have to figure out what the sign is, well, yeah. Give some kind of direction, you know, so.
You put, will you be putting up more signs then, for yourself there?
Just, uh, every parking spot's gonna have a sign, you know.
Those are, yeah, those are informational, right?
Yeah.
So you've got one big sign that identifies the property, and then each door has an informational sign for suite, whatever, yeah, A, B, C, D, E, or whatever.
Yeah, with the lights on now. Have a, set up some, they'll be the same kind, you know, you can have this and that one. They get out there, they got different types of signs up there, if you have one uniform sign, there you gotta have. You can have five different signs.
Do you gate, are you gonna gate the entrances at all, or just kinda? Otherwise, they all have to have a key or whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything more we should discuss, Liz?
No, not unless you have any other comments.
More comments?
Yes, the commissioner, what do you think about that pavement on the north end there?
Pavement, what do you mean?
What we thought we were getting last time, paved to the first time.
Yeah, I thought it was even talked about going, sharing with the guy across on the north side too, going past his. I thought we planned to do the first time.
Yeah, they were going to use all the driveways, and he had a commercial property there as well. The intent was to pave all the way back, minimum was what's shown here, but you're right, the discussion we had back when when Burns got the IUP was to, to go all the way back.
Yeah, that'd be the only thing that would really be a huge plus to do that piece of the street. Otherwise, it'd be, you, you wanna see this get used.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I guess it's a great idea. And I guess that'd be the only thing, it's just like last time, we were pushing to get that piece paved.
So if it was supposed to be done last time, how can you go back after that person and make them do it? So he doesn't have to have the expense if it was supposed to be there already?
Well, for some reason, looking at the IUP that's attached here.
So that somebody missed it, or?
Yeah, I don't think it was, I think it was pulled out of there. Yeah, I don't think it was, I think it was pulled out of there at the last minute, for some reason, but, uh...
I think we certainly intended on that in the discussion at P N Z back when Swanson supplied the I U P. I was surprised, I assumed I'd see it in the attached I U P here, but I don't see it there. But yeah, I know the minimum was to the first driveway.
To the first what?
First driveway, there's a commercial driveway, if you look across the road, we were talking about picking up his, going back to his driveway on the north, and then the second driveway coming in, if that was gonna be a service road to this, so, maybe twice as long as it chose there. And splitting that with the commercial driveway on the north.
What about talking to the state and telling them to put their I U P back in there?
Good luck, and...
That's what I was thinking.
We're gonna be happy to get anything out of the state after the shortfall's coming up. And I don't know where the state sits on what they wanna do with forty-seven, there's some talk about. Probably not gonna be a lot of attention between forty-seven, uh, Saint Francis, or Saint Francis and Anokas.
Twenty-two south will be accounted for, they say. Twenty-two south, nice plan.
They want, yeah, they wanna turn it back to the county.
Oh, okay.
They don't wanna pay to improve it through, Anoka's one of the biggest things, through the fairground areas and that kind of stuff. They would just assume not have it.
Nobody wants to participate.
Anyway, I wouldn't hold on as well.
How does it kind of, uh, any kind of, uh, turning point would it do?
Well, that's why I put it to the commission now, because that's, obviously, we're coming for it overall, what's this gonna cost you? Is there a return for you? And if you've already been thinking, okay, here's what I'm gonna do to the buildings, here's what I'm gonna do to the property itself, is that a make or break on that?
Does it work?
Is there any other options to get that, to get that paved, that section at least, it actually benefits everybody right around that area?
Tag it onto the city project. Tag it onto the city project.
Because if that ends up being potholes and stuff like that, right on that corner all the time, it's gonna be everybody that makes, I don't care if it's the people coming on this lot, or even the neighbors down the road. Once there's a hole, and there's water, and you drive through it, it makes it...
Especially with the old apron, and maybe it's even up to the driveway, maybe it's just gotta get a fifty-foot apron on the end, off the end of the asphalt. So it's the first two cars are on pavement.
We fill it often.
Plus, I mean, even just fifty feet back to the edge of the road.
Well, certainly worth asking the state, you know, we didn't get it back when they did the road, we're gonna get it now. Just depends on what, what they have, if you've prepared the base to have that.
Well, or else it's a city maintenance project, give them the fifty-foot apron there, so. Otherwise, I guess my only other thought is, you're saying it's gonna take you a while, which I'm watching. I guess, what if we said, you know, please do that, and you had a three-year window to do it, so you got a chance to fill up your space.
That's probably about a forty, fifty thousand on your property, you know, at least, probably.
Well, the question is, yeah, you're gonna need approval from the states, you gotta be up to their standards as well too, I guess. That's where it'd be nice, with this city project, for benefit of all neighborhood, this back there. Because it's really more for the, for the neighborhood, so, the business, so.
Yeah, I mean, it should be reviewed, and he would be a, I mean, it would seem odd that we would, he would have to bear the cost of that whole thing, if it's something that we think it needs to be done. If it's a maintenance process, then you assess the residents on that street, just like every other project, right?
Yeah, do that too.
So Liz, is there something in the I U P about abandoned cars, or cars that are in a repair state versus a sale state?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can certainly have a condition that they're all licensed and operable, if they're sitting out there, you know, if they need...
We don't want, I mean, we don't, I mean, he said it too, he doesn't want cars that are missing fenders, or got the hoods up, or tires off, or up on blocks, it's like, we don't want that. So, it would be good to write something in there, so that if that does happen, we can send him a reminder, and he can go talk to his team.
So it don't look like a salvage yard, I suppose, huh?
Right, right.
Exactly, because it looks like he's gonna do it, I mean, it looks like it's in need of a facelift, looks like it's gonna get a nice facelift, right? So I would, I would propose that, and then update the strike to remove the ten spots from the house? And is there an agreement that you take out that third driveway and come into the house from the second driveway?
We could do that, I mean, once, yeah, half of the year.
Yeah.
Back out, because it's a gravel driveway anyway, isn't it?
Right.
Keep everybody in one area.
Perfect.
So you're still gonna use the house as a residence for the first year?
Correct, okay, so it still would be a driveway for the first year.
Correct.
Just the way it is.
Yep.
Just the way it is.
Are you putting it in there that he's gonna be using that house for the first year, and it can't be after that, or is that long enough?
Yeah, we could put a sunset date in there, because otherwise, see, you know, it's like a home business, and you've gotta have a property owner living there. You know, if you're converting it to an actual commercial use, then nobody has to live there, so...
Is a year long enough, though? Is a year long enough for you to have your son living at that house, do you wanna have it a year and a half?
Well, a year and a half would be fine, too.
Things change.
Longer is better.
Or do we want him though?
Right, maybe you want him out in the year, yeah. Bottom of the house, there you go.
Can you make it six months?
Yeah, a year and a half would be awesome, yeah.
Well, we'll figure out those details, I mean, one of the big things would be to make sure, from these stormwater drainage requirements and everything, that, yeah, the changes he wants to make are okay with the city engineer, so.
So if he's gonna come back, he would need, um, an I U P, and he'd also need a variance, because the house is not a hundred feet off the neighbors, which is not commercial?
Yeah, if he wants to convert that to commercial, and he doesn't have a hundred-foot buffer, so we're gonna have to have a whatever. If this is eighty-eight feet, he's got a twelve-foot variance there.
A lot of trees there.
There's a lot of trees there?
Yeah, there is a lot of trees.
I just don't wanna get in this situation where he comes back, thinking he's gonna get an I U P, and he's ready to go, and it's like, we tell him up, well, now you need a variance, so...
I think there's a huge grove of trees on the northeast, northwest corner, going down just to that low land, and then, yeah, and then the south line, pretty much, yeah. There's some huge lines of trees there.
So the biggest sticking point is gonna be that pavement?
Yeah, sounds like it, so I'll fill the minutes, see what those conversations were back then, and, yeah, you'll have to... You know, I don't know, be willing to pave a lesser portion, like was mentioned, or if you wanted to stop it, or what?
See what the options are that would come up with first.
Well, let me know before the meeting, though, if I go in there, I ain't coming back.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, pretty much, we'll, yeah, I just seen that today, so I mean, it's... Yeah, anything else, I mean, I would think it definitely would be a benefit to the, make it look a little better anyways.
Exactly, here's my... Okay, you got enough information, Liz?
Well, that sounds good to me.
Can I just clarify how we're gonna resolve the payment, because that does not seem clear. Next steps on the payment requirement, whether you're requiring that or not. If Rick is saying he's not coming back to the next meeting, we wanna solve that now, don't we?
Yes, commissioner.
Well, they're just a recommending body, they don't make the final decision anyway.
Okay, okay.
So, that's city council. What we could do is, you know, put the topic on the city council agenda and see...
This month, do we have?
Uh, in, well, October thirteenth, which would be between now and the meeting you've come back to here. And just chat about it.
These feel a little like we hanging in there, and I'm like, I don't wanna be hanging either, so, yeah, we should, good idea.
Get it squared up. Well, I think that's, I mean, you, I apologize, I'm just here with my mother, my name's Josh Swanson. You, you said it seemed a little unreasonable to put the burden on Rick to put that pavement in. There's gotta be, uh, a way to get this accomplished, if we're just down in that little nugget, it's a big nugget, I get it, but we gotta be able to come up with a plan, I would say, to cover that burden of costs, if there's, the state has to have some, whether they have money or not, they still have to, it's their highway. They have to be responsible for something in Eastman, whatever that is, thirty-three feet, or whatever, that they should be responsible for putting that apron in there. And so I don't know, on this, on this committee, if somebody, you know, who, who's gonna contact the state, I guess, would be my first question. Is that something we have to do, is that something the city does on behalf? It's a city-owned road, right, the Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue?
Yes.
Correct.
And, and I, I think, I don't live on that street, I don't know, I do see the potholes. You're, you're coming off like dirt road under, onto a highway that you have to accelerate up to fifty-five miles an hour, and people are gonna spin out, whether it's the mailman, or the residents, people testing cars, it's a combination of everything. And so I know there's the one comment about whether something should have been done in the previous I U P, right? So that sounds like that would get looked at, to see if it was an omission, or what happened there. But I'm just asking, what are next steps here, besides just waiting for the next plan? It sounds like there's a potential to go to the city council, and I don't know what happens there, but...
We have no authority here.
Okay.
The city council's the one set the authority.
But they take your recommendation.
They review.
Review, okay. Somebody recommend it.
It was, it was one understanding that you were gonna call the state, though, correct, Liz?
I can't, yeah, I can call, or, or the city clerk too, we could talk to her about it, what she wants to do.
Somebody needs to call, just clarify what's going on then.
I think we should just put it on the city council agenda for, just to discuss it, and...
Yeah, I think if you could talk to Liz, or to Lori, and find out if they could do something, how far back they go. In case they absolutely refuse, we need to know that too, so...
Is that the same?
And then if we think it's a, um, if it's a large enough issue for the city of Malvern, or the residents, if that's something that the city wants to tackle as a maintenance project, like Barry suggested...
Even to put the first fifty feet and pave it, just to cut it off of the...
And if we say, hey, everybody along that road's gonna benefit, it's gonna cost X amount, okay, everybody's gonna split it up, here's what the assessment is, and we do it that way, so, just like, you know, if they pay past your road normally, it's a assessment based on how many people are on the road, and how many people are gonna access it, so, I think there's a couple of different options. I don't know exactly what the best venue is, the best venue would be, hey, state, you forgot to do this ten years ago, when you paved the road, because the state shut down, can you come back and put a fifty-foot on here? Because it's a three-foot pothole, or whatever it is, I haven't driven the road.
You know, they wanted to keep it, they compensated something back to them.
Yeah, which is probably gonna be difficult, but we can ask. Does that answer your question, sorry?
Yes, thank you, in getting nearer to that, what is the cost of that project, right?
And, and I have no idea what it is.
But how do we get to that, is my question.
They go out for bids, I mean, you're gonna have to wait on that one.
Well, and there's standards, like nine ton, or whatever, you know.
I mean, I'm sure there's an estimate that we, someone could provide, based on how wide it is, and how long it is, and what the spec is.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's true, which street, that is, all the people are a little, like, dangerous, or something.
Right, right.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, well, so, all right.
Any other questions that you have, or any other concerns?
I'm still confused, what's our next step?
We were just discussing today at five.
So, next steps for, at least, I'm gonna put the your property separate from the asphalt piece. The asphalt piece, Liz is gonna do a little bit of research with the state, see if there's anything there. I think she's gonna go back to the old I U P, and see if we actually put anything in, that was anything in the minutes, that, I don't know exactly what that's gonna find. And then, I think if, then it's gonna be a discussion topic for the city council, on, hey, how do we wanna handle this fifty-foot strip, or whatever it is.
Okay, and the next council meeting?
Well, the thirteenth of October is the council.
And you were bringing us up to that time, and...
Well, let's see, the next deadline for submission would be the sixth of October, which would be a week before that. But I don't know that you can even work with Bogart, or whoever, fast enough to get site plans in two weeks, you know, so, I, I think we're gonna have to push it out anyway. So maybe it's best to see what the city council says.
We're not changing the parking, we're just moving.
Well, but you have to have a site plan that's current, so you, you've got to, you know, have this done, have the site plan drawn. I mean, unless you're gonna just keep it exactly, and you're gonna maybe re-stripe it or something. But, you know, we have to have an up-to-date site plan of what you wanna do, and show where the septic is, and show everything current. I mean, that's required for any commercial property, so...
I guess I don't wanna spend a lot of money if they're not gonna do the road. Yeah.
Right, right.
I, for money, I'm for, for my, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
So you're not gonna move forward if the road doesn't get paved, or you're saying you're not gonna pay for it?
We have to do, we have to, I have to negotiate, and, but if I gotta pay for it, I don't know.
Right, so...
So I'm thinking it's best, yeah, to wait until you get some feedback from council.
On the pavement, right?
On the pavement issues.
And I think, and, again, correct me if I'm wrong, does he need to apply for a variance as well, or not?
Yes, he has to apply for the I U P and the variance. And, you know, I'll typically, I can play around a little with the escrow amount, but, um, we'll see how, you know, I think, too, I, I don't know, I mean, you maybe should give a call to Bogart Peterson, and see, well, what are these costs gonna be for site plans, because, you know, if you don't have to change any stormwater, then that's great, you know, but you still have to have an up-to-date site plan.
Start to figure that septic in.
And septic, yeah.
Um, Liz, does he need a variance if that house is residential? It's just when it goes commercial, isn't it?
Well, right, but you don't want him to come back again, do you, for that buffer issue? If we know it's gonna be commercial, and the commercial's covered under the I U P, because the auto sales require the inter-muse permit, so, we don't wanna have...
I don't know how much that would add to it right now, if he's a year and a half out, maybe, the business is flowing better, and he comes back, is it gonna be more expensive to come with variance later, when he wants to convert it to commercial, if he does? As opposed to, he may want to convert to commercial later, pay the money now, I just...
It is all commercial.
But the house right now is zone, it's zone commercial, but as long as there's, continue to be residential use of that house, that's really what the variance is, when that house goes from residential use to commercial use, it has to be a variance because of the setback.
Well, that's true, I mean, it's gonna be...
If someone's with their five years, you're different, huh?
Yeah.
Would you put a time on it?
Well, I'm just saying, if it happens to be, he wants to stay two years, you want him to stay two years. If you're paying for that variance now, then you want to use for, to convert to commercial.
So that's enough, and then the lane does not pay for the variance at all?
Actually, I just said, I mean, Liz, that's...
The variance is fourteen eighty, and I, and the I U P is fourteen hundred eighty.
We should decide.
We could, you know, combine public hearings, and that, if we did it together, but, you know, we've also... Get it done, I, it's, you know, we could, do it that way, yeah, and then whenever you're ready to go...
So if you did it together, you could do the fourteen eighty to cover the variance and the I U P all at one time?
No, it wouldn't be exactly like that, but there, I could maybe reduce the escrow somewhat to get, you know, but we would have, we wouldn't have two... Um, but we would have, we wouldn't have two public hearing fees, we'd have one public hearing fee. So there'd be, you know.
It's some, it's some, some reduction, but it wouldn't be half.
Wouldn't be half, no, but.
Half of the other, of the second or something like that?
Yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, like maybe.
The three-quarters of the whole wall?
Yeah, you're probably saving a third or so.
So once, uh, you fill this by the city council, then. They're kinda, it's kinda, they're dealing a lot on there, what they say is pretty much it's gonna go, or?
Well, we can get you some feedback before you make your application then.
Yeah.
And then you will at least kinda, you know. I would, you know, I guess ideally we'd know if they want you to do it, or if we'll find another way. You know, because that's basically what it comes down to.
So what, what Liz and Lori will do is they'll research the state portion of it. They'll give the options to the council and say, what's your preference? You'll know before you apply for the variance, or for the variance and I U P.
And we'll know that for the next council, near, after the next council meeting?
Ideally, we get the information from Liz and Lori.
Okay, so.
So the deep option, such as the next council meeting?
Yeah, so you'd wait, what, approximately three weeks from tonight would be the council meeting. And then, you'd have, you'd have to wait like five weeks to even make application, so you are kinda losing that time. Versus, although I don't know how fast, you know, Bogart can get a site plan put together either, so. It's, I don't know, or I guess if it's simple enough and you're not making extensive changes, I mean, maybe you can just kinda. Draw it on here like we did, but, because the buildings are there, the parking lot's there. But, let's talk to the city engineer tomorrow, I'll have a conversation with him and. Say if we stay, if we stay, you know, with the same impervious surface, we're not increasing anything. You know, does he need to review it, because he's the one that typically requires more detailed plans. You know, if I need to see things like the building and the parking setbacks, et cetera, which isn't as technical, you know. So we could.
You're gonna talk to him?
Yeah, I'll talk to him and then get this on the city council agenda. So, yeah, let's see if we can keep it simple. And, um, I'll, yeah, let's talk tomorrow or the, you know, before Friday.
Thank you, so there is a possibility the site plan won't be updated based on Rick not changing any of the pavement and so forth?
Yeah, I, if he, right, if he's not changing impervious, you know, we still have to somehow document what he's changing, if anything. If this pavement's not changing at all, then we really, you know.
Great, perfect.
We can rearrange the parking, like, on impervious.
If you just wanna re-stripe it or something, yeah, and we can show that somehow, then that's fine. I mean, you're, you may not even have a double roll like they're showing, you know, if you don't have that many cars there. So, yeah. Um, well, let's, yeah, let's plan to, you know, I'll get some feedback and we can meet out there and look at the landscaping and such too.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
There's nothing else we can do about this, because this is just for information, plan review. So, if somebody'd like to make the motion to adjourn, we can adjourn.
I'll make the motion. Harold, good man.
Jason made the motion, I think. You're, you're gonna sleep well tonight, Harold, man.
Oh, no, no.
Say aye.
Yeah, me too, me too.